Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on November third, 2022. Notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the amended resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 2022 through January 2023. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 7th, 2022. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution published in the January 14, 2022 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has posted to the municipal website, PrincetonNJ.gov/calendar. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the ongoing state of emergency
Louise, Louise, Louise.
New Jersey regarding COVID-19. Notice that during the declared
Louise.
state of emergency, all regulars, yes, yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're voice
Can you hear me?
Yeah, but your voice is getting distorted maybe every 10 seconds or so.
Okay.
I can read it. I could read the opening statement if you would like.
Yes, go right ahead and do that. Okay. Meanwhile, I'm going to close some apps so that maybe I'm taking up less bandwidth.
Okay, I'm going to start with pursuant to Executive Order 107. Due to the ongoing state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8th, 2020, and again on January 6th, 2021. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have the opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be asked after each applicant's witness or at the end of their testimony. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representative representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by the Planning Board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the raised hand icon at the bottom of your screen, or participating by phone by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. We will have a countdown clock to help speakers keep track of time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. That's it.
Done. Can you call the roll, please?
Yes. Here we go. Ms. Capizoli?
Here.
Mr. Chow?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Ms. Sacks?
Here.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Bodikheimer?
Yeah.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Good.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
We'd just like to request that whichever Dan Weisman is actually Derek Bridger should change.
I'm trying. No, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for that.
I can do that. I can do that here. So.
Okay. Um, announcements. Justin Lesko, you want to give us a, a master plan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, Planning Board members and members of the public. We have a few upcoming events with the master plan. The first is that the Community Visioning Survey is ending this Sunday at 11:59. So late Sunday night's your last chance to get in that first community vision and survey. Please, you know, let others know there are a lot of flyers around town and add in the topics, et cetera. Then that'll be followed up with our next steering committee meeting on the 10th of November. So it's a Thursday. It's not our usual fourth Wednesday of the month. And that'll be 1:00 to 3:00 PM on Zoom. The information will go on the municipal calendar tomorrow. And then lastly, at the end of November, November 30th, we will have a, an open house in the community room at the library. And that'll be an event where we talk about some of the preliminary results of the Community Visioning Survey and some other things that the consultants have explored using some of our other existing documents. And it's really going to be a drop-in event. Even though it's from four to seven, you know, I welcome you to stay all three hours. But if you could only drop in for five, 10, 15 minutes, be it at four, be it at 6:45, we welcome everyone to do so.
Hey, thank you. Other, other announcements from board members or staff, the only thing I want to remind folks, oh, I saw it, David.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, we were scheduled to have a meeting of the site plan, I'm sorry, the Landscape Subcommittee on Tuesday morning. We were unable to garner a quorum. So that meeting is being rescheduled. Carrie, can you remind me the exact time? It's Monday, I believe, at nine?
We can do it Monday now that we have everyone here. I need Mr. Chow and Mr. Tex Arney to confirm their availability Monday.
9:00 AM.
I
Yes.
I think I'm available. I have to confirm.
This is for the ESCs.
I'm available.
Great.
Okay, I'll get the notice out right away. I have it ready.
And then there's another meeting of the landscapes hub coming at 9:00 AM. We're going to be looking at the Princeton Business Partnership. Sorry, not
Princeton International Properties, right?
Yeah. We have a PVP and a PIP.
Right.
Princeton International Properties Plan Review and
Turf Hune.
And yes, and the Turf Hune Properties, the Wind Project, so.
Right, and that's, that's tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning at nine, open to the public.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And I just wanted to point out, I think the board members know, but for others who may be interested, we our next meeting after tonight is December 1st. Typically, we have only one meeting in November because of the League of Municipalities Conference that falls on the third week or the week after the week after Election Day, this week, the third week. And and of course Thanksgiving. So so we have more time off than usual between meetings, but it's, it's traditional for this planning board. Okay, Subcommittee Reports, Updates.
I have that. Um, the Ad Hoc Subcommittee on Design Review unfortunately was delayed with their reports. So we expect to go over that at our December meeting, and everyone will have all the reports and accompanied minutes to go with that.
Okay, so that discussion we were going to have tonight will postpone to the December 1st meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
Just wanted to give a brief report. The Site Plan Subcommittee met on Monday of this week and looked at the two projects that you're seeing tonight, which were deemed minor site plans, but with variances. So the board obviously needs to review them. And there was a third application for 185 Nassau Street. That's the former public school that I guess is now a part of the Lewis Center for the Arts. It's a landscape redesign for the area in front of that building, and that was deemed minor and it's variance-free, so it's recommended to the Chair for approval.
Okay.
The, the site plan Subcommittee did something a little unusual about 90 Nassau, which we're going to hear tonight. It deemed it a minor, but not because the cumulative impacts in their totality didn't become a substantial impact, but that given that there was really no site plan, usual site plan issues, it made no sense to have them go back, start them over again, submit a lot of material that they don't have to submit. So we just wanted to make that clear.
Good. Thank you for that. Okay, any other Subcommittee Reports? I don't think so. All right. Minutes. We have minutes of a regular meeting on May 19th, 2022. Any comments or edits? And if not, would someone like to move those minutes?
I'm Ms. Julie.
Thanks. Moved by Ms. Capizoli, seconded by Mr. Cohen. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, resolution findings of fact, we have one from Jefferson 335, was a minor subdivision at 335 Jefferson Road and 144 Turf Hune Road. Block 7007, lots two and 14. This was file number P 2222-185MS. This was a redrawing of residential lot lines. Mr. Cohen?
I just want to remind people, I recuse myself from this conversation because I'm within 200 feet of the property in question, and I'll turn off my video until y'all are done.
This is I also wanted to advise that Mr. Chow and Ms. Sacks were absent that evening.
Okay. Uh, so the resolution, any, any comments or uh, other concerns about the resolution? And if not, would someone like to move it?
Um, oh.
I moved. I moved.
Moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Mr. McGowan. Carrie, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bodikheimer?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Good. So, and we're ahead of schedule. I noted that Carrie put timeframes on the agenda tonight, and maybe I should have said something about this under the announcements, which for applicants is a suggestion and a guideline because we want to be efficient with our time. So next up, we have a, a discussion of the Rec Department's Hilltop Park Improvements Plan.
Please, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
This, yes.
I need to amend by Site Plan Subcommittee report because we actually reviewed one other project, which was again a signage package for the Senior Care Center on Mount Lucas Road, which does have variances as well. So we actually handled that similarly to the 90 Nassau that we're going to be discussing tonight, where the committee did deem it to be a minor, but sorry, but sort of refraining from judging that the cumulative impacts were minor. Wanted to let the board make that decision for themselves.
Okay, so that will be presumably on a December agenda?
I assume.
I think it, I think it will be. We, we talked about it very briefly in passing today.
December 1st.
Okay.
As long as I get reports, yes.
Thanks. Um, okay, Recreation Department, who is taking the lead on this discussion and presentation? I'm looking forward to it.
Yes, Madam Chair. Uh, I'll jump in and introduce Evan and Joe real quick. We have Evan Moorhead, the Executive Director of our Municipal Recreation Department, and Joe Maroli, the Assistant Director. And they're presenting improvements that they have proposed at Hilltop Park tonight. And these improvements are mostly replacements of existing features that frankly would probably be, you know, go through our administrative process. But since it's a collection, we thought the board should see and comment on the proposals, and Evan will go into more of what they are, but the existing things that are being upgraded are playground equipment, a pathway leading to it, ball field lights, and potential basketball court improvements. And then there's the only new item that they're looking to present tonight is for a new batting cage, similar to one at some of the other parks. Our professionals have worked with Joe and Evan on the lighting and the drainage changes that these could have. So you'll see those in the report or in the presentation. And Evan and Joe also presented this to council probably about a month or two ago, so it might not be completely new to some folks here. So once again, this is a courtesy review for your comments as a board on all of the changes. And Evan, if you want to take it away.
So I assume, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Moorhead, nobody needs to be sworn in for this, I assume, Jerry?
Right, correct.
Okay. Go right ahead, Evan. Thank you.
Okay, that's, that's good. That's a relief. I didn't want take some pressure off. Madam Chair, members of the Planning Board, thank you for, for having us here tonight, myself and Joe, Justin. Thank you for the introduction. As Justin mentioned, we have already been to council on September 27th, I believe it was, where we had a work session and presented what you're going to see tonight. It was very well received by, by council as well as by members of the public who were in attendance that evening. On October 6th, at our most recent Recreation Commission meeting, it was the commission voted to formally recommend this proposal to Mayor and Council to move it forward. It's the result of a year plus of efforts on behalf of the staff as well as a three-person Subcommittee of our Recreation Commission who worked on it. And so I will, I'm going to share my screen here, and I will do my best to be efficient to keep, keep you all on, on schedule for tonight because I know how long these meetings can be, having been at my own Rec Commission meetings, and they can and I certainly appreciate it when guests are conscious of the time. And so I'll just get started here with the proposal. And as Justin mentioned here, the highlights would be to summarize, what we're looking to do is replace the aging playground equipment, which is about 17 or 18 years old now already, with all-new inclusive playground equipment. That would be something new for Princeton. We do not have what you would consider an inclusive playground that provides opportunities and components for kids of all abilities. You know, whether they be developmentally challenged or more mainstream. And so this is something that's a trend that we're seeing in playground development, and it's something that we think would be really important to have here in Princeton as we move forward. This current surfacing of the playground is a wood mulch, and we would propose to replace that with the Porton Place Rubber Surfacing. If you're familiar with Mary Moss Playground, which is a corner of John and Lidle Streets, which was renovated in 2018, that playground now has the Porton Place Rubber Surfacing, and it's been very well received there. It's an even surface, makes it much more accessible for individuals that might have mobility issues. As part of the project, we would also need to renovate the existing asphalt pathway that leads from the parking lot to the playground and make it fully ADA compliant. We would propose to replace the existing base, baseball softball field lights with LED sports field lighting. Those current lights are about 30 years old. They're, they're the end of their lifespan. They would, in all likelihood, need to be replaced in the near future anyway. And as Justin mentioned, the only new addition to this, to the park, it's not currently there, would be a batting cage. It is the only ball field in Princeton that does not have a batting cage at the, at the park. All of our other parks with baseball softball fields have batting cages, so this would be a nice addition for that field. And then some minor basketball court improvements would also be part of this project. What you see here is just an overhead of the park itself, highlighted in red are the areas in question that we're discussing. The pathway there outlined in red that leads from the parking lot to the playground, and then the outline there of the existing playgrounds. Further over there to, to your left is the proposed location for the batting cage. And then the, some arrows that point to the existing light poles. We plan to reuse the existing light poles, so there would be no disturbance in that regard. We would be taking down the existing fixtures and harnesses and replacing with the new LED fixtures and then some of the wiring with the poles. We would reuse the existing poles themselves, themselves, so there would be no, as I said, no disturbance there. This is just an overhead of what the playground would look like, same footprint as the existing playgrounds. And then here's a side, a side view of what that playground would look like. This is a little bit more detail about the Porton Place Rubber Surfacing. It is permeable, the infiltration rate 2,200 inches per hour. It would have a three-inch compacted stone subbase underneath. It's a, it's leveled and very even. Water drains vertically, and we've had no issues with the Mary Moss Porton Place Rubber Surfacing, that area of the park, in general, we don't have any, you know, doesn't tend to have any drainage issues that I'm aware of, and so we don't anticipate any issues there, given the nature of the, of the surfacing and our experience and, and of you, of having it at the Mary Moss Playground. We do, as of now, we are proposing that we would install a fence around the playground. There is not currently a fence there, but there was some concern that given that we're looking to appeal to a broader audience with an inclusive playground, there are some, there were some concerns that children potentially in that demographic might wander, and so we want to as part of that, for safety reasons, we're looking at installing what would be like a decorative four-foot metal fencing around the perimeter of that playground for safety, similar to what you see in this picture here, which is what we have at the Mary Moss Playgrounds on John and Lidle. Just to summarize quickly with the playground, aging equipment replaced with all brand-new inclusive equipment, it would speak to developmental, the development of children in five key areas, cognitive, social, emotional, physical, sensory, and communication. The Porton Place Rubber Surfacing replaces the wooden mulch and provides much improved accessibility throughout the entire playground area. And as I mentioned before, it is permeable. The design itself will increase the usability for people of all ages and abilities, as well as having the ADA accessible ramps and wider decks for access. The playground would be enclosed with, as I said, with the, with the decorative metal fencing. And I don't know if you could tell from the pictures there, but there will be some built-in, additional built-in shade canopies there for, to add some protection for users from the sun. And our goal is to preserve all the trees around the perimeter of the playground. There are one or two that are fairly close. As of now, our goal, our, our hope is to be able to preserve them throughout the construction phase of this project. And moving on to the LED sports field lighting, this picture shows you a before and after. This is Villanova University. And hopefully, it's fairly evident there from the pictures what a difference it makes from having the older metal halide lights to the newer LED sports light, how much more directed and precise that lighting is onto the field area itself, which is a great benefit to the user as well as to surrounding neighbors. Pictures here of the existing ball field lights, as I said, we're going to reuse the posts, the poles. All that we would be, would be done in that regard is removing those existing harnesses with fixtures, taking those down, putting up the new LED lights, the wiring, and would need to be, would also need to be replaced as part of our project. Here is just a comparison that you'll see of the existing to the lights, to the proposed lights. I should point out that the existing lights don't meet current industry standards for the number of foot candles on the field, which is, you know, a safety concern. And so we would increase the foot candles on the field while reducing spillage off the field and reducing glare. And so those would both be, you know, really great improvements, I think, for, for any neighbors in that area who have concerns maybe about the current lighting that's, that's there and some of the glare that comes off of it. This should be much, much improved from what we currently have. The technology from the late 80s, early 90s to where we are now with the sports lighting is, is, it's you know, it's, it's night and day, literally, no pun intended. And these are some diagrams here. It may be hard to see here, but they, they do a measurement with the horizontal plane there at 150 feet from our perimeter around the playing field, and it would reduce the max light spill at 150 feet from as you see there, from 0.3 foot candles to 0.02 foot candles. So that's a measurable, it's quantifiable, and I think that will be a really noticeable improvement, both for the users on the field as well as for the neighbors. Summarizing this piece, as I said before, the distribution of the light, much more directed and presight, less light spilling outside the playing area, less glare, great benefit to the neighbors. The LED lights will increase the safety for the participants on the field. As I mentioned, the existing lights don't meet the current industry standards in that regard. We will reuse the existing six light poles. And as I said previously, the current lights, 30-plus years old, nearing the end of their lifespan, they, they would need to be replaced regardless of, of whether we do it now or in the very near future. The, the batting cage on the left there, you'll see a picture of what we have at Smoyer Park. And so we're proposing to do something very similar there at Hilltop in the picture there to the right, the location that you see there. And so we have a similar batting cage at Smoyer, one at Farmview. We have a couple at Grover Park, and then at CP South, we also have batting cages. As I said, Hilltop is the only ball field does not currently have a batting cage. It would be on the third base side there, between the field fence and the asphalt walkway. It's about, it's 14 by 80 feet. Floor is compacted, three-inch gray clean stone. Posts are anchored in concrete, as I said, somewhere designed to what we already have at three other parks. Because of the contour of that section of the park, we would need to have a retaining wall put in between the asphalt walkway and the and the batting cage. It'd be a two, two-by-80-foot-long retaining wall. And then we do remove the netting everywhere. We don't leave it up. It's, it gets put up in the spring and taken down November, late November, when the fall baseball season is over. And then just a couple pictures here, the basketball courts, we'll be doing some crack repair, maybe repainting of lines, some new rims and backboards. Another piece to what we're looking to do at the park. And just in review, as I mentioned previously, the we don't have an inclusive playground in Princeton. I think this is a much-needed amenity that, that we would be adding. And, you know, I think it's, as I said, it's been very well received and the folks we've talked to so far. And the pathway surfacing lighting upgrades will improve the overall park's safety without any negative impact in regards to stormwater management or light spillage or any of that benefit the neighboring homes, and we hope that the new amenities are going to improve the overall user experience at Hilltop Park. We know we're excited about it, and we think it's going to be a real nice project once we're able to get, get moving on it. And so open to entertaining any questions or comments from the board.
Thank you. Do board members have questions? Seems like a very thoughtful set of improvements.
Thank you.
That's great. Mr. Cohen? And then Mr. O'Donnell?
Yeah, I
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I, I was one of the council members who received this very favorably. I've actually experienced an inclusive playground like this with my granddaughter a few months ago for the first time. And I just wanted to say I was with her again today. And she's asking me, when is the new playground going to be ready? So. Yes, she's very, she's very enthused as well.
So when is the new playground? Do you have a timeframe?
Because of where we are in the, in the calendar year and. This isn't a project that we could, and with lead times on, on materials being what they are, probably about two months, we're looking at springtime. Because it's dead of winter is not a time when we want to, when they can do this type of installation typically in, in, in the northeast. So we'll be looking at the spring after the ground falls.
Okay, you can stop sharing your screen, I think. Mr. O'Donnell and then Mr. Chow.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, I think this is absolutely terrific. This is great and congratulations on putting together. This great proposal. Couple of questions for you. First of all, the fence that's going to surround the playground itself. Is that going to have gates or openings, you know, just a plain opening or an actual gate?
We, to be determined, our plan, I, I, I think we're thinking of it in terms of a gate, but we're open to. You know, rethinking that if there's a reason to.
Because I, I've kind of been going back and forth because, you know, a gate. Could prevent younger children from wandering away, but it could also prevent younger children from getting in. So.
Yeah.
We, trying to climb the fence in order to get in.
It's a, it's a valid point. We, we had thought about perhaps not enclosing it completely and just putting the fencing in such a way. Is that it sort of ground kids away from what might be considered the danger areas of wandering off. So that is something we're looking at. It's not, it's a, it's a, an awkward shape. And so it's not the easiest thing to fence in as we. Went up there and met with a fencing company. And so we're. We're open to, it's something that we're still working through, but I just. You know, I put it on there because I do anticipate there will be fencing of some type. I just don't know if it will completely enclose it or if it'll just be a partial.
Okay, that's great. And is there a plan to be just the one, one opening or maybe a couple strategic, strategically?
We would likely have just the one. Where the pathway, because there is an existing asphalt pathway that meets the playground, meets the border around the playground. And so we would likely have the opening at that same general area and just have the one opening rather than multiple.
Yeah, okay, that, that makes sense. Regarding the, the batting cage, how far away from that is, how far away will the batting cage be from the? Basically the baseline. It'll be the, the third base to home plate baseline, right?
Yeah, so I'm looking, I don't have the exact measurement. It will be, certainly it's on the outside of the fence and there, which the fence. I could reshare the, I don't know if it would be helpful for me to reshare. Here's the, there's the overhead there. So, I mean, I would, I. From just a bulb, to, to put a, an estimate on it, I'd say it's probably about. You know, eight feet, eight to ten feet off of the, the existing fence there along the third base side. Uh, how much room is between the third, the, the, the foul line there and fencing that I'm not sure about either? So certainly could, are you, the concerns about the safety overall?
Yeah, I, so there, there's a fence actually on the, you know, separating the, basically the field from the batting cage?
There is, yeah.
I, I was thinking about, you know, somebody trying to track down a fly, a foul ball.
No, there's a fence there, yeah.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, there's a fence, yeah.
Terrific. And then just my last question is regarding the timing that you just spoke about, can, you know. Hopefully everything is able to move along smoothly and quickly. But does that mean that the, any part of the park, you know, parts of the park will be unavailable during, you know, spring, summer?
Certainly the, the playground during the construction phase would, would be offline. And so that could be a period of a couple of weeks from start to finish.
Okay, that's all you anticipate. Okay, that's good.
Yeah, the rest of the other pieces, you know, when we do something, the batting cage is not going to keep anybody from using the ball field. And we will try to schedule the light replacements in such a way that it won't. Impact the baseball softball field schedule. You know, we'll, we'll, we'll try to plan around that. The basketball court would probably be down offline for a day when they have to do crack repair. So it's, it's a very limited timeframe for that. When that's done, that dries very quickly. So that wouldn't be a long period.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mr. Chow and then Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, hi. Yeah, it's, it's great that the, the park is getting an upgrade up there. It's good to have those facilities. I have quite lightings about, questions about lighting. You showed the wattage the same. For the, with the highlights and the LED. So LEDs are a quarter to half the wattage per lumen. Or then, yeah, the, for the same amount of lumens, you, you use about a half, quarter to half of the wattage. Are you making the field brighter as, as a result?
Yes, it will. So we're increasing the foot candles on the field for the users because we don't, what we currently, the output there currently. Is not up to what the industry standard would be for player safety on the field. So we are increasing the output. On the field for the user.
Okay, so.
While at the same time, it does reduce, you know, the LEDs by, given the, you know, the. Technology reduces the spillover off the field and any glare for, you know, other, for, for neighbors. But it does increase, we, we are increasing the output of foot candles on the, you know, in terms of what the. Players or participants on the field will.
Okay, thanks. Related lighting question. Are there lights on the parking lot there? And do they need to be replaced as well? It'd be good to have. You know, LEDs, efficient LEDs all done at once.
Sure, that, there are lights on the parking lot as well as. Near the restroom building exterior. I'll have to look at, I'll, I'll need to check on that. I don't know that when the last time those were replaced. I don't believe they are LED fixtures, but I will.
Yeah, yeah.
I will find out, yeah.
I think it's a good opportunity to do it all at once, especially if those lights are on a lot, like, you know, through the night and stuff.
We don't know, they're not, well, they're not left on overnight. Now, we're, they're, they're on a timer along with the ball. And we only set them on nights when we know there's going to be usage. At the park in the evening.
Alright, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Uh, Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, a couple of things I'd like to add to the, to the conversation. First of all, congratulations Rec, Rec Department. It's terrific what you've proposed. It's truly cutting edge. I'm impressed and this sets a standard which is appropriate for Princeton. Beyond that, first of all, I can tell you from my experience at Smoyer Park, kids love a batting cage. And that catting, that batting cage will be a big winner. Secondly, for reasons which I'm sure you'll appreciate. Congratulations for not adding AstroTurf in any way, shape or form to the park. Thirdly, what you also need to know is that when it's ready, I'll be among the first basketball players on the new court. But what I would really appreciate, the, some further perspective. I love the word inclusive and I have a generic sense of what it means. But could you, could you give us a sense of practical things that work? In this new configuration to make it inclusive? What does it mean as a practical matter to be inclusive? That's a major, major factor.
Yeah. Absolutely. And I'd be happy to meet you up there for some one-on-one too, if you are, you know, when, when, when we redo the basketball courts, play a little hoops. Play some horse or something up there if, if you want. And I, and I, I have to say, I was actually hoping to get through this whole.
Six oh nine, six eight, three, five, five, seven, five.
Okay, I got it. I was hoping I was going to get through this whole presentation without the, without the work turf coming up, but I, you know, you, you got me, but um, that's alright.
Since I was adamantly opposed.
Yeah.
My wife told me today I had to say that publicly.
Gotcha, okay, alright. Fair enough. So inclusive, yes. What does it mean? In practical terms, so it means providing a space where. Kids of all abilities can find, you know, whether that's someone we might consider mainstream or a child that might have some type of developmental. Or a mobility issue or, or something otherwise or cognitive. And providing a space where there's elements and playground pieces. That all, that, that will reach all of those individuals, all of those kids. That doesn't mean every single piece that we have there will speak to every child, but it means there will be something there. That will work for every child.
Yeah.
But no matter what they, what that's, their particular situation might be. Certainly there are the concerns about the access with the, you know, as I mentioned with, with the, with the surfacing. So you're providing a surfacing. That's very even and that drains well and that doesn't need to be monitored on a regular basis. And so that provides accessibility there. You have the pathway, you have the, the, the surfacing. You will, you will have easier entrance and access ramps that are sloped appropriately by ADA standards so that. You, that, that, those youth mobility issues can easily get on, on to these pieces of equipment. You will also have some pieces of equipment around the perimeter of the playground for kids that might. Prefer a, a more solo experience versus a collective experience of being on a playground unit with some, with a bunch of. Uh, you know, with a bunch of other kids. There are pieces around the perimeter that might speak to different areas, uh, you know, of the, of the development for a child. Where kids can find a place to play and do something that provides a little bit of sensory relief for them versus being in a, in a group. And so I could certainly get into a little more, you know, I could pull up the, the thing again and talk maybe about a couple of the pieces. But in a nutshell, what we're trying to do is what I said, provide something that is going to. Have an experience for all the kids, you know, in the area, all the kids in Princeton, surrounding area who want to come use it. We don't have that currently at any of our playgrounds.
Anywhere else, that's right.
Yeah, anywhere else in, in our playground. So I think this is really. Something that will set the standard. I know a couple of my board members have stated publicly that. While this may be the first, they don't want this to be the last, that as playground equipment ages. In Princeton and, you know, playgrounds have a, have a lifespan where at which point you need to replace them. And, and we do have some other, some others that are. You know, on the, on the back half of their, of the lifespan. We want to consider doing this at other locations where it's feasible. But this will be the first piece to that and certainly we'll learn from it, but I think it's going to be a great. Yeah, addition to our inventory and I think a real feather in Princeton's cap to have it. Certainly a trend we want to be on the forefront, kind of at the front of versus being behind the curve.
Here, here.
Thanks, Jack. Uh, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I ju, I just wanted to comment on a couple of other things that I think are worth mentioning in terms of the inclusion, inclusionary. Experience. One is that there are swings that are actually two-person swings. Where a caregiver can be on the swing with the, the child who's using it. Which is a really neat concept. And the other thing is that there's a lot of sensory exploratory. Items, things, you know, that play music if you hit them in a certain way, things that are tactile. With, you know, pictograms and, and stuff like that. So that I think, you know, if somebody is vision impaired or, or hearing impaired. They'll, they'll, they'll be able to really enjoy. Different people will be able to enjoy different sensory experiences through the, the equipment. So I just wanted to mention that from.
And there, and there are multiple pieces like that. In, in, in this proposal. As well as the springs, I believe they call it swings. I believe they call them expression swings because you can see the expression of the person you're, you're actually facing. The child, the two, the child and, and the caregiver are facing each other. And so we don't have swings like that. This would be, that would be a nice piece. Communication board where a non-verbal child might be able to point to the different elements to select the one that they. Want to play with. That's another piece that would be included.
That is all really cool. Mr. Tex Ernie?
Yeah, it's, it's a very nice project. Although I was just very curious about the rubber surfacing. Is there any recycled content in that? Do you know if, or if it's just, you know, fresh? Petroleum, for lack of a better way of saying it.
I don't know, you know, it's, I, I can share the screen here, the spec sheet that there has. For the, for the product, if that's helpful. Again, it's, you know, that was in the presentation packet. That I don't specifically know what the, I mean, it's revolutionary, combines the. Rubber bond elevate. EPDM particulate blend. So I'm regurgitating what I'm looking at here on the screen, but. I don't specifically have the. The specific makeup of what those port in place. Surfaces, you know, speaks to your question.
Okay, I was just curious. Thanks.
Yeah.
It's great that it is permeable.
Yep.
I embarrassed to say I did not look closely enough at the plans to look at benches. I, I just want to. I'm not asking to look back at that, but just to encourage. You know, plenty of benches for parents and other visitors, especially around the playground. I live real close to Mary Moss Playground and those benches always have parents, you know, older kids. The, the picnic tables, which are covered, are also heavily utilized. And, and just have been a real draw. With regard to gates, I have one piece of feedback also from Mary Moss Playground. There are three gates there and two of them work quite well and the third one has been sort of problematic. So I, I see Joe nodding, so that's already on your radar, I guess. Do you plan to have any? Trees or flowers or any kind of landscaping in the playground area or? Or adjacent to it?
It's not in the current plans. I mean, certainly we couldn't, we wouldn't put in the immediate playground area. You know, it doesn't, the, the two things don't go, I mean, not, when I say the immediate, the bordered playground, it wouldn't go in the bordered playground area. We're not looking to change the current landscaping. We're hoping to preserve the trees, as I've said. But we don't have any plans. I mean, that's something we could look at after the fact and see, you know, maybe how things. You know, where, how things develop, but it's pretty close to the wood line there, that, that the current playgrounds. There's not a lot of room on the backside. There's a lot of trees on the side closer to Bun Drive. And then you have a little bit of a berm there actually between the playground and the basketball court. On, you know, I guess what's maybe like the northern side. And so. There aren't any, I, I don't know that there's an area that really stands out as one we'd want to try to improve in that regard. We certainly want to maintain as best we can what's already there with the trees. We are, to your earlier point, we are going to include some new benches out there, some new picnic tables. That'll be part of this as well. I didn't put that in the proposal, but that, that minor pieces that. You know, make, well, you know, certainly we recognize the benches and seating for those who are there. Monitoring the kids or the caregivers, the adults, the parents, whatever, like to have a place to sit. And so we recognize that.
Yeah, absolutely. Are you adding any bike parking or do you, you feel like you already have plenty?
Uh, it wasn't on the plan. I mean, we could, you know, we could revisit that, that, that wasn't something we were initially considering. But certainly something we could look at is, is whether we think we need to add any additional, hadn't, hadn't, honestly hadn't thought about that at all.
Well, if, if there's already, if there's plenty there, it's not, you know, overutilized or whatever, then maybe there's no need, but it probably worth the.
Yeah, we'll revisit. I don't know that there's a great, I, I think what we currently have from my, what I've seen and what I haven't heard any requests for more, but. Certainly, you know, kick, you know, kick that can and see what comes up.
Yeah. Okay, any other? Okay. Any other, Mr. O'Donnell?
Thank you. I just, I actually have a process question either for the chair or for Mr. Lesko or Mr. Muller. Is this a project that we'll have to come back to the to the board at some point for approval?
No, just.
Okay.
Yeah, these will just come for courtesy review and and comment and feedback from the board.
In that case, I think, thank you very much. And I really appreciate the opportunity to to see this and have the board have some input. So thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Likewise. Any, any final questions or comments from board members? Well, thank you both, Mr. Morehead and Mr. Maroli. It's, it's a really, really cool project. And congratulations on bringing it along.
Thank you for having us.
Just one, just one comment real quickly. In terms of the lighting, the university is putting lighting in on one of the stadiums. I think it's the soccer stadium. It looks like, and the images that you showed us were pretty much the same as the images that the university showed us. So I just wanted to mention that they were doing, you know, the same type of thing for your information, in case that was useful for you in terms of any changes.
Thank you. Yeah. And we had heard that. And certainly we have some contacts over there.
Okay.
Yeah, if community park is coming up next, I can't wait to see new lights on the tennis courts. Because you can see those from the space station.
I know, I know. It's the next, that's next project. Yeah, we'll get through this one and, you know. Interview interviewing potential design firms this week as well for the RFP for that project, so.
Oh, great.
Yep.
Good. All right. Well, thanks again. We'll, we'll move along and let you go watch the game.
Okay, great.
Started yet, but.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you all.
Thank you again. Okay, next up, we have two hearings. The first is Jeffrey Siegel, Minor Site Plan with Variances at 90 Nassau Street, block 20.01, lot 38. This is file number P 2222-253 PM.
And then, Madam Chair, Carrie advises that proof of publication and service are in order and the board therefore has jurisdiction.
Okay, great. I know for for the sake of board members, there was a little bit of confusion this afternoon about whether all the notices were proper. They they were double checked and all the, all the proof of everything was pulled together and Carrie looked at stuff real fast and we're good to go. So, Mr. Witt, are you here on behalf of the applicant?
Yes. Good evening. Thank you, everybody. My name is Jared Witt. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Jeffrey Siegel. And thanks for taking the time to hear our application.
Before you, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but before you start, I would turn to Mr. Dobremilsky or our own professionals and ask if they have any comments to start us off or or not.
I mean, I would, I would offer if I could introduce my experts and have them sworn in because they would be better able to to answer some of these questions as they might be presented.
Well, typically, I, we definitely will swear swear in your witnesses and we'll do them all at once. Typically, we hear from our own professionals. Just real quickly, they set the table and then we, and then we turn to our applicant. So anything you want to say to start, Mr. Dobremilsky?
And if you, if you go raise your right hand, in fact, if Dan, Derek and Elizabeth can raise their right hands is, and Dan Weisman as well. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about, you're about to give will be the truth?
So this is Dan Dobremilsky. Good evening, everyone. I can go through real quickly my October 25th report. Just to kind of like you said, I'm sure to set the table. So I'll start doing that. This is an application for minor site plan in variance relief approval to install five additional new signs on the south and east facades of the existing five-story building. I'm going to share my screen just to show an image. You see that?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So this is in the the submission application. It's a photo of the building that we're talking about, the corner of Nassau Street and Witherspoon Street. It looks like it was dated September 1, 2022. And so this is the building in question. The use and all of the signs are associated with an occupant of the second floor, and I believe it's Compass, which is a realty company, I believe. The municipal engineering and zoning report of October 19th offers a detailed description of the use, the bulk regulations and the sign regulations for each sign. The applicant has received the zoning permit approval for two additional conforming signs noted as number one and number two in the report. So that brings the total number of proposed signs for the use to seven. The plans depict the location of approved sign number two, approved sign number two, but not sign number one. So we've asked if they could show that in their testimony, where is approved sign number one? Getting to comment three, the ground floor entrance space in this building is currently occupied by a building, by a bank, the ground floor space. And the planned submission did not depict the signs that are located or provided for that use. And so we asked if they could also illustrate those signs in concert with the proposed signs. So the board gets the full picture. In the, in the application, when a variance is applied for this type of variance, a C variance, the, the application, the submission requirements ask for three specific written statements about the variances, the first being talking about the unnecessary, the hardship that is provided by the ordinance. The second, the exceptional circumstances or conditions applicable to this property. And the third, how the benefits of the excess or the the non-conforming or not signage will substantially outweigh any potential detriment. The application did not include that information, but I would ask and presume that the applicant is prepared to offer that testimony before the board in support of the variance request. Specifically talking about the variance request, I want to comment four now on the second page. There were some concerns that I wanted to express that the, for signs in particular that are not permitted under the code. And more specifically going through the five bullets, sign number three, which is on the Nassau facade. I believe it's in this area here, if you see my cursor to the left of the main entrance. That's the sign on that area is not permitted. The sign number four is, is in that same location, I believe, and is also an excessive size and not permitted as there's only one sign allowed for a second floor use. I also indicated that some of the, the messaging on that sign seems more like a slogan and a web address rather than directory or away findings type signage. Sign number five is an internally illuminated display measuring 10 feet in square, 10 square feet in size, which was in addition to some concerns noted for number three and four about the previous two, that there were extra signs on that front edge, but also this sign in particular, which occurs in this kind of alcove in the building over here on the left side of the front facade is an illuminated electronic variable message sign, which is specifically prohibited by municipal code. The fourth bullet is sign number six is a halo lip projected blade sign on the Witherspoon facade. So moving to the, you know, the image which shows more of the Witherspoon, they occurred down in this area here. The cursor showing the area to kind of the rear side of the building where there's a street light. As sign number six occurs there, and that sign is not permitted for a second floor use. And sign number seven would be an oning over that entrance down there. And that also is not permitted for a second floor use. So in in total, I think the signs are not individually excessive in terms of their scale relative to the building, nor objectionable in terms of color, again, in context of the building. But the potential combination of these signs, along with the signs that are present or could be present for the primary ground floor use, resulted in a cumulative effect that could be considered undesirable clutter, could be confusing and could be excessive messaging. And so I do raise those concerns and ask that the applicant provide testimony in support of their request addressing those concerns. The, the proposed signs may result in an approach that exceeds the aesthetic and functional practicality of this building. The two signs proposed for Witherspoon Street would appear to be redundant and excessive relative to the permitted signs in terms of locating or finding the business. I guess the question here is, are two signs really needed or is one sufficient? The advertising sign of the slogan indicated on sign number four and the variable messaging of sign number five seem unnecessary to assist in locating or conveying the type of business and could establish an undesirable precedent, leading to further, further proliferation of prohibited signage of this type. It's not clear how these signs present a benefit to the community that outweighs the potential, potential detriments. Or how they are warranted by exceptional conditions associated with their location or use. So the applicant is asked to provide testimony and exhibits to address these concerns and requirements. And so I will stop sharing my screen now. And that's, that's what I have at this point.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Are any other comments for staff that they want to bring to the board's attention before we hear from the applicant? I'm not seeing any, so. Okay, Mr. Witt, sorry to have interrupted you before.
Sure. So sorry, I, you know, I wasn't really aware of exactly how your protocol works. So thank you.
That's perfectly fine. Yeah.
So, so I would like to introduce the three witnesses that I have here who have, you know, intimate knowledge with the plan and and the owner and be able to talk about the project itself and and why, you know, and how they feel that that they satisfy all this criteria that you mentioned. So my first witness is Tyler Ladue from ML7. And he was, he's a representative of the owner of the property in Jeffrey Siegel.
Okay, and if your, if your witnesses can illuminate their cameras so that we can see them and for also for purposes when Mr. Muller swears them in.
If you could, all three of you, you could raise your right hand.
Well, he hasn't finished saying who they are.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I might as well bring all three of them.
I just turned off. Can't, it won't let me activate the camera.
Oh.
Cannot start your video because host has stopped it.
Oh, well, we don't want, we didn't do that on purpose. There you go.
All good. Thanks.
Okay, well, there's Joshua Zinder, who's another one of my witnesses. So there's Josh, there's Joshua Zinder, there's Tyler Ladue, and there's Dakil Nakul.
Okay, if you could, if you could, oh, raise your hands. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give be the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
So I guess I can take it from here. I'm assuming you don't need to qualify me. I've been presented to this board often enough. It's okay.
We tend to qualify each and every time, Mr. Zinder. Sorry to take you through it again, but we.
I'm Joshua Zinder, AIA Lead AP and CARB certified. I'm the managing partner of Joshua's into architecture and design here in Princeton. I hold a Bachelor of Architecture from Syracuse University and a Master in Advanced Architecture Design from Columbia. I'm a rich start architect in New Jersey and seven other states. I've been practicing architecture for more than 30 years. 2013, I was in New Jersey Architecture Year, Architect of the Year. And I presented this board and others around the state and the country. And I am currently AI New Jersey Immediate Past President.
Thank you. We accept your qualifications.
Thanks. Okay, let me share my screen. Okay, here you see exhibit A. There are 19 pages in this exhibit. If you need me to point out the pages as we go, slides can go, just let me know that.
Yeah, you should do.
Yes, please.
Okay, so here we're on the cover. 90 Nassau Street is a building at the primary crossroads of our town, Nassau Street and Witherspoon Street. The ground floor has Bank of America in the space and the second floor will have Compass Realty as new tenant. We're here tonight to discuss the signage they wish to have for their new and exciting business coming to Princeton. Their space is currently under construction. 90 Nassau Street has been a fixture of our community since its construction around 1902. It has changed much over the last 120 years.
Right. And you're, you're on the second slide now, right?
Slide two, sorry. Okay, now we're on a slide three. Here you can see it today. It is a significant edifice in our town and has maintained its integrity throughout its life, even though it has changed significantly. Going on to slide four. In its history, you can see it began life as a three-bay structure with one primary ground floor arch over here, three bays. In the 1920s, it was doubled in size to six bays with two ground floor arches at that time. There were in 1928 masonry balconies on the building as well. In the 1960s, there was a modern addition, brutalist modern addition added to the building along the Witherspoon Street side. And around that time as well, a third arch was added to the Nassau streetscape and the balconies were all removed. So there's the third arch in the center. You see that difference. And you can also see the the masonry, even if you go today, you can see that that seam running in the building. It's really interesting little piece of history. If I go on to slide five, Dak, can you tell us a little bit about Compass and your goals in our community?
Yes, absolutely. So hi, my name is Dak or Dakil. And I am with Compass and the Corporate Real Estate Team. So our team's goal, as you'll see here in the mission statement, is really as a, to act as a residential brokerage in the community to help folks find their homes, find new homes and best sell their homes. And, you know, that is the primary goal of of Compass as a brokerage in in New Jersey. And we hope to, you know, help serve this community, I think, and every community that we're a part of. We, we host a lot of philanthropic events, host events for the community. And, you know, obviously serve as, as a lynchpin with some of the top agents in the community to help folks find and sell homes.
Thank you. So we look at the floor plans of the building on slide six. Compass will occupy the entire second floor. Their space is currently under construction, as I mentioned. Due to the unique nature of the 90 Nassau Street floor plan, there are two entrances to their space. You see the Nassau Street entrance off the vestibule, then into the lobby, then up the elevator. And the other one off of Witherspoon Street, you see over here, comes right in there, goes up a stair and directly into their space. The Nassau Street entry, which is primary and the Witherspoon Street, which is, I guess, considered secondary, although it will be the most used, most often used. The Nassau Street is primary because the elevator is at that lobby location. It is most likely that staff and others who come to the space often will be using the Witherspoon Street entrance, which takes them directly into the stair and directly up into their space. Go on to slide seven. Here you see signs one and two that were previously approved via administrative waiver at the Witherspoon Street location. The sign number one was the overhead sign here. And sign number two is a vinyl letter, or I think they're vinyl, on the glass door here. There was some Bank of America signage. I believe that's in the process of being cleaned off and cleaned up. But this will have just the compass signage at that location.
Josh, is this a rendering or is this a photograph of actual installed signs?
It, it's a photograph with a, I wouldn't quite call it a rendering. It's a. It it's a photograph with a, I wouldn't quite call it a rendering, it's a Photoshop composition, I would call it. So it's compass here is has not been installed yet. Tyler might be able to, I think they were about to sign the the signage on the door itself that might have been installed this week, although I'm not a hundred percent sure with the.
That was installed, I believe, earlier this week, or it might have been last, late last week, I believe.
So this is what it it will look like.
Are these both on the Witherspoon side or?
This is, yeah, so this is this is the Witherspoon entry here. The the compass above the doorway is here, and the compass on the and then the note on the door is here. And these are, these are permitted for a second floor of businesses with the way the current structure of the zoning. You know, at that, when we originally reviewed the signage with the town, we did initially present the signage on Nassau Street, but based on the interpretation of the current zoning and ordinances, the Nassau Street signs would have required variances. And so in order to get compass into their space and open as soon as possible, we proceeded with just the ones that could be approved administratively, and that's why we're here today to try to get the other ones approved. So at this point, I think it's important to note that sign number seven, which was a sign that was on an awning, which was to sit over this this element here, has been eliminated. Okay, we will not be requesting any variance for sign number seven. It is not going to be included as part of our project or reason, the rest of the presentation. And and we did that really as a response to the feedback that we got from HBC and from the planner and staff reports. In looking at at what was presented, we felt that a simpler presentation was better. So if we continue on slide eight. So Compass is a Realtor, and under current zoning, a Realtor is considered to be office space. And would have to be, it would it would have to, if they wanted to be on the ground floor, they would need a use variance to rent space on the ground floor. So you know, it it's a much larger ask to put office space on the ground floor, so they were able to find this space which met their needs up on the second floor. The other Realtors in town all predate the current zoning or receive variances for the use of of their spaces. I can't say a hundred percent either way, we didn't look into it, but they are offices on the ground floor. So when you consider the amount of signage being proposed here today, you must also compare this to other Realtors and their ground floor uses. The notion of excessive signage, as noted in the reports, is odd. One, you know, when one considers the use and this particular location, and looking at other Realtors. You know, and we, just to be clear, we do not intend this to be an affirmation or a condemnation of inset signs, illuminated signs that most Realtors use and and have used for many years. You know, but Realtors in our community have awning signs, illuminated inset signs, facade signs, listing signs, sandwich word signs. Most of them have this, and some of them even have illuminated monitors as we are are proposing. Here you see some other examples of some Realtors in town.
And and what you what what?
So here you see some other examples of Realtors in town. We go on to slide ten. When looking at how we approached the signage for Compass, we had two primary goals. First was to be respectful of the existing architectural edifice. This is very important to us. Second was to provide exposure to an exciting new business in town to allow them to support the property owners and future property owners in our community. The size and scale of these signs is intended to fit within the scale of the structures and the central business district. The biggest issue with these signs is that they're supporting a second floor business. As you are aware, typically Realtors are on the ground floor. However, office use is not permitted on the ground floor. The signage adjustments were more of a site sensitive approach, keeping the office use where it should be up on the second floor, while still allowing this Realtor to draw the passerby to their business and their listings. In order to make our presentation a bit clearer as we move forward, we're going to zoom in on these two particular facade locations separately. In addition, our signs are numbered for clarity and definition. As I mentioned, the two that were approved here in this location were signs one and two, and now we will go over to the Nassau Street side. On slide eleven, here you see the existing portion of the Nassau Street facade that is in question. Please note that the existing blacked out window here has been this way for, well, I've been in town for coming on twenty three years now, and it's always been blacked out. So just take note of that. Here you see the facade with the new signage on Nassau Street. Sign number three up here is an inset sign, which sits on the existing soffit that's a huge feed in from the window. Inset signs are not defined in any of our signage ordinances for the first or second floor occupants. But there are certainly a few around town that successfully use this technique like J Crew in order to not overburden the architecture on the facade. At two point five four square feet, it is a minimal impact on the ground floor business, on the ground floor. And can in a ground floor business, it is a minimal impact in general, and a ground floor business could have a facade sign up to twenty square feet, but as a second floor tenant, it no sign is currently permitted. Sign four is connected, which is on the on the glass here, is connected to Compass's mission statement and a subtle way to draw passers passerby's attention without overly intensive signage, without a wall of listings. It would be applied letters on the inside of the glass, although it has been calculated in this calculation at three point seven square feet, the text alone measures only two point eight square feet. At five point three square feet, these two signs together, signs three and four, would be less than six square feet which is allowed on the ground floor for blazing signage currently for that ground floor tenant. This could easily be considered a window display, you know, for a ground floor tenant. And and might not even be actually considered signage in a way. You know, it's really no different and actually less impactful than other Realtors in the air area. You know, certainly, it is less impactful than a window filled with potential listings. The corner window, which has been blacked out for years, as I mentioned, will have sign number five in it. It's going to have a monitor inserted behind the glazing, which will occasionally change to show current listings. There will also be some text above the monitor, which you see here, Compass. You know, the rest of the glass will be painted black, so it will disappear and allows the the logo to to pop out. This has little to no impact on the street, and it certainly has greater appeal than a blacked out window. Now, if we go to the existing Witherspoon Street entrance, so this is what you would see at Witherspoon Street by about a week after, before the compass sign was in installed. This signage here, I believe, has been cleaned up. It it was formerly the Bank of America signage. And so I believe most of that's been cleaned up, if not all of it. So here's the existing condition. And here you see on slide fourteen, you can see how this entrance would look with the to approve signs and the projecting sign. Again, please note that we've removed the awning and the associated signage from this location. We go on to slide fifteen. You can see slide number six, which is the projecting sign. The letters on the projecting sign will be halo lit and not throw any light. It will just provide a soft glow around the letters. The building is prepared to have an agreement with the town with regard to the projection of the sign into the right of way, which is required for whoever puts projecting sign in. The blade sign, we've located below the entablature and below the entablature here and centered on the on the pier. This is an appropriate location for the sign on the overall facade of the building. And it helps connect Compass to the rich historic edifice in lieu of the brutalist nineteen sixties edition. If this was a ground floor business, this would be as of right. Bank of Princeton could put a blade sign in this location, and it would be as of right. If this was a ground floor business, I said that right, to clarify something that was noted in the historic memo to planning, it noted that the projecting sign extends three feet into the right of way. That is not correct. It only projects one feet, one foot, four and a half inches into the right of way. So it's it's more than half as big as was previously thought. We go on to slide sixteen. Here you see the opposite side of the street of Witherspoon Street with the awning signage and the historical Harris Restaurant projecting sign, which is considerably larger than what is proposed for the compass sign. And then, you know, if we if we take a look at the whole facade of the building, right, and it's both parts, it's the it's the brutalist component and the larger historic component, this sign is actually relatively small compared to the overall building. And we believe that it is appropriately located, you know, and of appropriate scale for this building. It's on on this streetscape. You know, the section of Witherspoon is particularly bare. If you walk up and down here, you know, from from Small World until the corner, there are no shops, there are no stores. The Bank of Princeton is on the first floor, I mean, excuse me, the Bank of America, sorry, is on the first floor. But that's, you know, a half a level above where you're walking here. And and so having some signage on the street to animate the streetscape, you know, is is actually a benefit, is beneficial for the town and community in general. Continuing on, here you see both of them. This is slide eighteen. The signage, we feel, is sensitive to the existing buildings and to the central business district. All the signs in question fit within the time of historical significance stylistically, although technologically, clearly, technology has changed, and they all, these type of signs can all be commonly found in Princeton, throughout Princeton. Signs are important for businesses, communities, and companies use visual graphics to make people aware of their location and to inform. Strategically place signs, enhance our streetscapes, and provide benefits to the community and improve the overall atmosphere. Signs are critical to create dynamic streetscape. These signs achieve achieve this without clutter and being sensitive to the community and the context. We believe these signs contribute to a desirable visual landscape through creative design techniques and are sensitive to the scale of the buildings and to the community. The signs are not out of place or too numerous for Princeton. They allow excuse me, they are low impact and, you know, inappropriate on this historic structure and in turn add to the rich architectural quilt that is downtown Princeton. Slide nineteen, thank you very much. Are there any questions? I'll stop sharing now.
Thank you, Mr. Zinder. Questions from board members? Zinder? Mr. McGowan?
Maybe this is more in line of of comments, but I was I I was looking at your slides on Witherspoon Street. Another one, what there's the one that's been approved. But I guess my question is that it's a blade sign that you also have there on on Witherspoon?
Well, it's a projecting sign or a blade sign, they're interchangeable.
And and I guess I'm wondering, well, there's that's not the the that entrance there is not going to be a a main entrance. Are are you expecting that? I mean, I mean, I I get that that you know, employees may use the entrance, but it would seem would be the Nassau Street side where you're going to have the real main entrance to to the business. So then I'm wondering what is the necessity of the sign I just referenced Witherspoon Street? That that's one, that's one. I mean, if you know, the next, the other question would be. Now, again, I, you know, I don't have the terms down quite, so sorry if I get get my terms wrong. If you're looking there's the blacked out window, and I I understand which 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 you're going to have, the sign is that you want to have there. Next to it, you also have a a sign, and below it, you there's the writing that you want to have promoting the business. Is that is that is that really necess is again, is that really necessary? Why, why, why is that necessary? You you know, you know, it's pretty obvious that it's a real estate business that that you have there. So those, at least right now, my two questions, if you understand what I'm asking.
Yeah, I I understand what you're asking. So with regard to the first one, you know, the the accessible entrance is definitely Nassau Street, and certainly it could be considered to be a a primary access point. You know, however, with the way the floors are, you know, it's more likely that people, certainly the employees will be going in and out there, and and I think it's it's felt that you know, people who might be visiting as well would be coming in and out of that location. And, you know, so it it's it's less seen as a secondary entrance and more seemed as maybe a convenience entrance, and therefore you want to sort of bring a certain amount of attention to it. At the same time, I think Compass is also trying to establish themselves as you know, significant in town without having, you know, multiple walls of listings. And and I think that's so that that's how how I would address the projecting sign, that it it is appropriate to the scale of what they have. They occupy the entire second floor. They their business spans from the historic building all the way through into the nineteen sixties section, and so they are significant. With regard to the the, I guess, it's a slogan, maybe on the glazing, you know, from my point of view, that's a better way to present the company than having, you know, a huge wall of listings to let people know subtly that this is where they are and what they do. But maybe, Dak, do you want to answer either of these two questions?
Yeah, sure. On the, I guess, on the latter portion that you were touching on, I think, you know, from what we see and, you know, really, in a majority of the communities that we're in, is that, you know, having some sort of vinyl slogan to help identify, you know, your company and and help to, you know, make your your brokerage stand out within the community, a simple, you know, slogan, and as I think Josh mentioned, would be, you know, largely permissible for any of the ground floor businesses in the community as well. Is is helpful to to identify, you know, what compass is and and what compass does, because, you know, while compass is now the, you know, the the largest brokerage in the country, it's not known or the largest in in every community, especially in the newer ones that we're entering. And I think, you know, you know, having the listings in addition to that, as as Josh had mentioned, I think is just consistent with other brokerages in in the community and in most communities that that we work with, and it's it's a common aspect to any real estate brokerage that we would expect, you know, is is generally permissible and and we think is extremely helpful to draw traffic and and help, you know, draw folks to our business, especially being on the second floor rather than on the on the ground floor like a lot of these other businesses might be.
Other questions?
Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I I do have a question, and I'd like to make a couple of comments. Where is the receptionist located? Is it adjacent to the elevator? In the floor plan?
Yes. Yes, it is adjacent to the Nassau.
Okay. Okay, so, I mean, I think it's clear to me that the number of signs. Uh, the limitation on the number of signs or second floor business in the code don't really uh, anticipate. Uh, second floor business with two entries. So I'm inclined to think that it's appropriate to have signage on both the Nassau. Frontage and on the Witherspoon frontage. Uh, I'd also comment in terms of the um. The variable display, I think that, um, you know, the, the pictures of the houses are really the products. That this business is offering for sale and, you know, we don't limit the number of mannequins. Uh, in the J Crew window showing uh, sweaters and skirts and blazers and stuffs like that. So. I think that, um. You know, I'm inclined to be favor, be favorable towards that sign as well. Uh, I do have the same concern that Alvin does about the blade sign on Witherspoon. I think that. You know, having two signs so close together with the exact same wording on them. Uh, doesn't really serve a purpose for me. I think the, the idea of the blade signs is to uh, allow. Um, passersby who are on a, on a cross street to be aware of a business that's down the street. You know, on a, on another street. And because this is not really going to be a client entry or at least not for. Uh, walk-in clients, you know, it may be an entry for somebody who has an ongoing relationship with a Realtor. Uh, I don't think that, you know, employees. Need to have that wayfinding help uh, from Nassau Street to that, to that secondary entry. So. So bottom line, I'm, I'm pretty favorably inclined to all of them except for the blade sign.
Thanks, Mr. Cohen. Ms. Sax.
Yeah, I, I'm just a little confused, uh, David, cause um, about where we are. I, I um. Certainly have a lot of um. Comments to make, um, but it sounded like what you were saying, David, was sort of summing up your final opinion the way we do when we. Have board debate at the end. And if we're jumping to that, I'd be happy to jump in. Um, but I, I, I don't want to uh, do that prematurely. I would, I assume that there was going to be um. Additional presentation and, and, but if we're, if we are at that point, um. Then I, 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 you know, if that's, I'm just trying to get clarification from you, Louise, about where we are exactly in the hearing. Are we at the point where we're summing up? Everything has.
No, we're not there yet. Okay. It's a reasonable point to make. Maybe Mr. Cohen was sort of asking or inviting Mr. Zender to. Or, or others to specifically to defend the. The, uh, the need for the blade sign. I mean, I don't mean to put words in your.
I, I really was sort of summing up. Is there another presentation from one of applicants professionals? I. I got the sense that we had heard that.
Oh, I, I thought that there might be uh, one more, but a certain Mr.
No. Sorry, Tyler Ladoo is here representing the owner. So if there's a question, you know, with regard to something pertaining to ownership. You know, Tyler can address those. Um, but I guess maybe if I could just share my screen again. Um, I'll break, go back to the last uh, image that, that we had talked about. Um, you know, when. You know, as I mentioned, this streetscape along Witherspoon is really, maybe I should go back one more slide here. Sorry, this one. So, you know, a- as, as you're walking down Witherspoon, um. You, there really is, you know, for this stretch, you know, it's a relatively narrow sidewalk and there is nothing wrong way. There is nothing, here we go. There's nothing um, addressing, you know. You can't actually see as you walk down the street, you wouldn't be able to see the sign at this entryway. You know, so having something that runs perpendicular to the way people are walking is. You know, I, I think is important. And certainly, um, you know, th- they can't put out sandwich board signs as. Every other Realtor and every other um, merchant has put on in town because they're on the second floor. You know, so having, you know, something that's scaled appropriately to the size of the building and having something that, that, you know, relieves the ground plane. Of the sidewalk from sandwich boards and other types of signage, you know, I think is important to note, you know, I think. Having a projecting sign, you know, in this location is appropriate and I think it does help. Um, add to the overall streetscape and help guide people to this entrance.
So this image shows the sign mounted on the side of the. Old, the older facade uh, of the building, the one that you were showing before had it mounted to the. Um, facade of the, so this is correct?
This is correct. It's mounted, it, I went the wrong way, but um, change the presentation, but this is correct. Um, this sign, you know, the, the, the reason why it's mounted on this building as opposed to the older building is because. You know, compass wants to identify itself with this rich architectural edifice. Um, the, they are occupying the space up on the second floor of the sixties edition, but um, you know, it's. Less significant for them. And I think it, it, it doesn't support their overall image. Their image is, you know, something about. You know, providing spaces of significance for their, for the, their occupants.
And what's on the other side of that sign? I don't think I saw it in the drawings. Is it, is it compass? But. You read it from top to bottom instead of from bottom to top?
Yeah, on both, on both sides, it will be exactly the same. It'll be bottom, bottom to top, just like this. So looking the other direction.
Oh, I see. Right. Got it. Got it. Yep.
It'll be on both sides. And that's, and you know, this is um, the size sign that's permitted. For projecting signs in town. So you're allowed to have up to eight square feet. You know, of course, the reason why this one's not permitted is because it's a second floor tenant.
Okay, thanks. Um, Ms. Sax, your hand is still up. Do you want to, do you have questions? Or should I go to Ms. Capazoli and that?
But sorry, yeah, no, I, I, um. So we're, we still have more presentation or um.
No, this is, this is the end of the presentation.
Okay, well, wait, uh, uh, go ahead, um, Julie. And then, then I, if we're into summing up, I, I'd like to start out. When we get to that point.
Okay. Julie?
Yeah, um, I would just like to um, sum up what we went over at the Historic Preservation Commission, um. And give Elizabeth Kim a chance to um, talk about the memo that we sent out. But, um. You know, just to sum it up, I think the changes on Nassau Street, although they. Um, don't comply with the ordinance. Uh, to us did not seem jarring or really out of place with the building. So I would say that. In general, the um, HPC was comfortable with what we were shown. On Nassau Street, um, and really, uh, it was the. Um, the, the awning on Witherspoon which they took away. And then also, um, there was not. Any real support for the blade sign at the HPC. And I just wanted to pass it over to Elizabeth. If she had further comments.
Um, sure, thank you. Um, just to reiterate what Julie was saying, um. The HPC really had no objection really to the proposed signage along Nassau Street. Um, there was some question about the display. Because they weren't sure which other real estate offices actually. Had their signage which, which displayed some of their real estate listings, whether it was. Something that was approved or was illegally placed and it was a violation. So they were interested in seeing what. The zoning officer actually could um, provide as far as information on that because if they felt, if this was acceptable, then they. Um, also considered this proposed um, display sign to be acceptable. And inconsistent with what's already been in town. Um, so the only other comment they had about Nassau Street was that. Um, although they felt that it was appropriate, they felt that it was simple. Um, it was not overwhelming as far as the signage. Um, they were concerned about perhaps. Um, the Bank of America signs, which is much smaller. But I believe the applicant had stated that they have an agreement with Bank of America. So they felt that there should be no conflict with them. Um, on the Witherspoon side street. The applicant and the application had stated that that really was a secondary entrance. It was going to be for Realtors who are familiar with the building. They'll be coming in and out. So they also felt even though. Um, the applicant, you know, really encouraged to have these new signages. And um, I appreciate the fact that they actually removed the awning one. Uh, they felt that it was excessive and probably not necessary. And they felt the original administrative approved signs were appropriate. Um, and that pretty much sums up how HPC felt about it.
Um, thank you for that. Mr. Bridger, do you want to opine on the?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you. Um, the variable message board signs are clearly not for, uh, permitted in the ordinance. And I have spoken to Callaway Henderson. Um, it was, did not get a permit to put it up and they've agreed to take it down. It's just they need a special contractor to. Uh, come and do that. So they're not using it in the interim. And the other one, I believe is that Remax on Harrison and Nassau Street. And I have issued a violation and I'm still working that out. So they're, they're not permitted by the current code.
Uh, thank you. Ms. Capazoli, do you have more? Your hand is still up.
Uh, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so, Mr. Cohen, I'm sorry, I sort of interrupted you by saying that we were not at the summary part when in fact. I was misunderstanding and. The, the applicant does not have more. People giving testimony. So if you have more to say, that, that would be good. And then Ms. Sax and then Mr. O'Donnell.
No, uh, actually, Ms. Wilson. Will we have public comment on this?
Yes, um, so I guess. Yeah, that's a good point. Sorry. So if, if members of the board have questions. Uh, that relates specifically to the testimony as opposed to general summary comments. Um, now is the, the time to ask them. Mr. Cohen, do you have, Mr. O?
No, I, I just had a couple of other comments I wanted to make, but if I can wait till after the public comment.
Okay, let's, let's pose questions from the board and then we'll go to public comment. I have a couple of questions myself, but go ahead, Mr. O'Donnell.
I actually do have a question and I believe it's probably for Mr. Bridger. Um. The blade sign uh, illuminated on both sides. Uh, that's actually considered just one sign, correct? It's not considered two separate signs. Okay. And um. Is there, I'm sorry, I don't know, I'm not up on the ordinance uh, totally, but. Uh, the fact that it's an illuminated sign pointing both ways, as it were, uh, is perfectly acceptable?
Yes, sir. The, the only variance for that sign, it would be permitted on the first floor, but it's not permitted on the second floor.
Understood. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's my only question for now.
So I, I think I have a question also for, uh, for Mr. Bridger. Related to that sign and, and that is would, would a first floor tenant? Have a right to a second blade sign? I mean, if the second floor tenant is not, it does not, is not entitled to. A blade sign is a first floor. Am I misunderstanding that? Is a first floor tenant entitled?
That's an excellent point. Um, so that's, that's one of the things I think the board needs to be concerned about is the first floor tenant could have. More signage. They could have a blade sign. They could have a main business sign or two main business signs on a corner. You, you get basically twenty square feet of non-illuminated. And you could split that on the two corners. Then you get. Uh, two sides not to exceed six square feet uh, on the windows. So. Um, but the, if a new business went in there and they wanted a blade sign, they could apply for it and. I would grant it if it complied with the parameters of the ordinance.
Okay, um.
Although I would note that, that architecturally, it would be extremely, extremely difficult for a blade sign to comply. With the Nassau Street facade. Um, in this case, because of the architectural treatments.
Mm-hmm. Um, Mr. Zender, I think you, I think you said. Well, here, I, I, I wrote with regard to the illuminated sign, there was, I think, testimony that the. Images would be. Um, occasionally changing, but I think that the printed language. In the presentation itself said constantly changing. So I wondered, you know, how, how, is it one of those things that's just like? Always changing? Or is it something that changes every five minutes? Or what's the, how does that work?
I think Dak can speak better to this, but I mean, I think it's maybe once or twice a day, but Dak, wha- what do you?
Right. Ge- generally, it would be honestly not changing at all throughout the day and just. Um, highlighting featured listings that we could then change out easily without having to change out. You know, slides on a sheet of paper that you're going to be hanging up. Um, especially being that it's not our, you know, ground floor space so that we won't have to constantly be in that. In that storefront and changing out listings on a daily basis, say. Um, there may be times where, you know, it is a slideshow of sorts that, as Josh said, maybe every few minutes at most would be. Changing, but it certainly wouldn't be displaying video or, you know, changing out the display any, any more frequently than. Once every few minutes.
Mm-hmm. Um, questions, Mr. Cohen? And then Ms. Sax?
I did, I did have a question that occurred to me, which is, um, on the halo illuminated, illuminated. Uh, or halo illumination of the blade sign, I'm curious whether. That's, I mean, my understanding of halo illumination is that.
Oh, you, you muted yourself by mistake.
Yeah, my understanding of halo illumination is typically a reverse channel letter, which has the light. Completely concealed behind the lettering and then shining on the surface. And the lettering is a little bit raised from the surface. Um, I know that, Josh, you've referred to the lighting of the sign on the um, Nelson House. As halo illumination and.
Yeah, so, so just before you even go there, uh, let me clarify. So, you know, based on the, the. Feedback from the community and based on the information from Derek with regard to that. Um, I can actually share my screen for a second to show that this sign is clearly going to be. Um, halo illuminated based on the definition for the town. There is a U-shaped piece of metal. Uh, there is LEDs that are placed on top of a piece of acrylic at the back of the letter. They illuminate the interior of the metal and there is a soft glow that comes out from that location. The edges of these letters are completely opaque.
That was my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sax?
Yeah, um. So, I, I feel like we've skipped over a number of steps here and, and one of them is that we're getting into the sort of. Details of asking how something, the, the specifics of, of, um. Uh, how something will uh, be implemented and, and what the impact will be, which usually, usually happens after we. There seems to be somewhat of a board consensus that we'll move forward. And I think we skipped over a major step here, which is um, whether these signs are deserving of the variance. And whether they meet that legal hurdle. Um, and we'd seem to have ignored the initial testimony from our planner. Um, I, I do have to say, Josh, I'm really disappointed in this proposal coming from you because you know that. I respect your work on signs and I think that this is um, really beneath what we've seen you propose. Um, to the town in the past. Um, just in terms of the variance, um, you know, we've talked a lot with Jerry in recent hearings. About making sure that we create the appropriate documentation and scaffolding to justify the variance. And that is, of course, that the benefits need to outweigh the possible detriments. Um, and I, I'll just say, you know, when people talk, um. A lot about everything except what they're supposed to talk about. And, and I didn't really hear a lot tonight about how the. About how the benefits outweigh the detriments. I heard, I I just took some notes about what I heard. I heard that um Compass wants, I heard a lot about how Compass wants to benefit. Economically, commercially, and in terms of their financial bottom line from this. And I just want to say categorically, that is not the responsibility of the planning board. They want to establish themselves in the community. Um, that's great. That's not our responsibility. Um, they um feel that this space is. Less potentially impactful than than other Realtor spaces. Um, we didn't make this choice for you to 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 um. Uh, you, there are certainly other uh buildings where other Realtors live. This building. There are two buildings in Princeton which are our flagship buildings. They characterize um. Our town, they're iconic. This one and the building across the way. Um, and we're, we're very careful to protect those buildings and have for have for a long time. Um, I don't see that sort of thoughtfulness and care to our historic legacy in these um. What you proposed, it's very rare that that I um. Uh, am am in a different position than our um than our historic preservation board. And I I feel that maybe as a town, we just have um lowered our standards and become so beleaguered, but um. This building is truly iconic. Um, and I think requires extra care and attention from the planning board. Here are the other things I heard you say, Josh, in terms of justifying this. Um, the building next door is so ugly, it's brutalist sixties architecture. I think the implication is, so. What difference does it make to allow something that's arguably less hideous next to it? Um, I heard the uh, the the uh, Mr. Nahul say. That the majority of the community communities you're in have vinyl slogans to that, I would say. Uh, Princeton is a unique community and um if you're interested in doing business in Princeton, particularly. In the real estate business, it would be important to understand how unique it is and and to fully understand the character of it. Um, uh, let's see, the Compass wants to identify with this rich architectural edifice. I heard uh, one of you say, so I'm wondering why you're here before the planning board trying to, in my opinion. Significantly change the character of this architectural edifice. Um. Let's see, um. Josh, you talked about how the building has changed over over many years. Um, no doubt it has. Um, but we do have strong um and strict standards in our central business district. Uh, as you know, to protect the legacy um and just and all of those changes certainly were constrained by. Um, the variances that we, the ordinances that we have in place. Um. So I my, I think what I'm um, you know, my point is that. I understand that uh that Compass is feels that other Realtors have a a better. Commercial advantage or a commercial advantage by being on the ground floor and that you've chosen to be on the second floor. I'm not sure that it's the responsibility of the planning board to level the playing field in terms of that advantage. Where other Realtors have chosen to put their their um, their uh. Their frontis, you know, where they've chosen to locate um themselves is um. You know, for the most part in buildings that are not as significant as this one and that and that's their choice. And I'm sure that there were, you know, a variety of. Um, uh, consequences and and things that they could or couldn't do. Anyway, I'm just the, you know, to sum up, uh, let's see, Josh, you said um that. You believe that it's sensitive to the community and um adds to the rich architectural quilt of our central business area. I don't think that these are sensitive to community and I do not think they add to the rich architectural quilt. Of our central business area. And you know that I am not one who is stuck on history, but I I'm just very disappointed. Um, I think the thing that in particular, the illumination um bothers me because that's something that we really have. Tried to um, you know, uh, slow the tide of of that inevitably uh. Uh, coming into our central business district. Uh, and I I, you know, I actually, okay, to to. David went through the different signs when he was okay and he was not okay with it. I I will say I do not mind the um. The lettering that it seems is already there on the uh door on Witherspoon Street. Um, I'm very glad you removed the awning. Um, the blade sign, I don't even find, I don't. I don't think it's a justification to put it there just because the building next to it is hideous. Um, but I also, I don't mind it so much, but I think the illumination is not necessary. The thing that really bothers me is this, you know, it it it, I think it looks really cheap. This, you know, all of these pictures that, you know, it's the uh friendess piece there. And I know, Josh, that it's blacked out now. Um, but it it's not garish and um in the way that this uh. You know, at least it doesn't detract from the overall elegance and dignity of the building as to me. This cheapens the the um, the the overall impact of the building that that I think that's the one that bothers me the most. The the illuminated um pictures in front and it, you know, it just reminds me, you walk up and down Broadway and you see all of these. Realtor places that are on the ground floor and they've got all those cheesy pictures in front. And it really offends me to think of that being in, you know, we in in our Princeton's iconic flagship building and I. To, I don't think Compass that that helps you to to build your image. Um. And I guess the final thing I wanted to say is that the um, the commercial uh. You know, the the arguments that you made was some were that, you know, all sort of amounted to that commercially, you needed. You needed uh all these signs to um, you know, to to help with your impact because you're on the second floor. But I would say that, you know, you you apparently you've already moved in, so you do seem to have some confidence that. Um, it's that you're um, that the your viability as a company here in Princeton is not going to be a problem. If it's hinging on just these signs, um. I would be concerned. I I hope that you have more confidence than just being able to put in these signs, so. And I also, I I um wanted to say that. Mr. Siegel, who owns this building, um is connected to the building next door, uh in which his nephew has his business. And they take tremendous care to um curate those those uh windows and um are are very. Aware of and concerned and spend a lot of time petitioning the town for um. Uh, for or against things that they might, that might even slightly impact their aesthetic facade and um. I think there seems to be a disconnect within the family in terms of um, you know, the priority on what goes outside of the building. But those those are my comments. I I really am disappointed. Um, and I I would like to hear. Uh, Dan Derbemilsky read the introduction that he did because I thought that memo from staff. To me summarized exactly what I then saw in the presentation and I uh. I think that if we if we can establish here a basis, a legal basis to overcome what was uh described in that memo. Sufficient to grant the variance, then, you know, we've done our homework, but I haven't heard anything yet, so.
So I guess, I I guess just to be clear, I don't think anything that I said was based on economics. This organization, this company has made a commitment and is moving to Princeton. Okay, um, they, as I said, there are spaces under construction and and it is not dependent on on, you know. On this signage, okay? However, and I just would like to share. Um, my screen for a second, you know. Me, you and I normally see eye to eye, and I guess in this case, we just don't. You know, I find this to be. Incomplete, to be perfectly frank, okay? Um, you know, this blacked out window and and the facade, and I think. You know, very strongly that that this makes it a more pleasant. Facade, a more pleasant streetscape and more welcoming to the people who are passing by. Um, you know, the sign, the images on the sign, you know, yes, this layout, because we don't know how Compass is going to lay it out. You know, but we figured at most you'd be able to fit eight, but you might have just one image of a beautiful piece of Princeton, you know, architecture, real estate. And and I think that that if you look before, before and after, I do believe very strongly that architecturally. Okay, from a design point of view and a composition point of view, this enhances the architecture of the facade. Um, so that is, that is, you know, and I think it does improve the community and improve the streetscape with its presence. I do also feel the same for. For the blade sign condition on Witherspoon Street, although I recognize that that is more unique. There are fewer blade signs in town and and. And I understand that it's not something that's as familiar. That being said, um, I think that that this evening we would request. That the board um review each one of the variances independently um and not look at it as a whole.
Josh, do they have to have, I I mean, what, can you go back to the the front, front? You know, I mean, I I see what you're saying in terms of the, I actually like the the Compass logo. I do think that that's very elegant and is, you know, consistent with the. You know, sort of the gravitas of the building, but it's this discovery your dream home with cus- with Compass. I mean, that's just so cheesy. Why, why do they need to have that, this like marketing right on this beautiful glass over, you know, oval?
I I think we can comment on it without without in insulting them.
Okay, all right, well, I, okay, if do they need to put the slogan there? Could they just have the 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 title?
Doc, do you want to talk to that?
So I. I suppose. I guess I'm struggling to understand why that is cheesier than a mannequin in a in a window, but I. I don't suppose that it's, you know, the largest.
And I might.
You know, impact.
If we look at some of their, you know, like, there are other, well, I don't have a picture of it here, there are other buildings. You know, as a a brand have, and I understand that's not, you know, uh, what we're necessarily talking about here, but as a brand. That is what they do on all of their buildings. Instead of having the field of of uh listings, they place. The the slogan which helps attract people to to their their business. Which, again, you know, for us, you know, I'm not talking about the economics of it. You know, it's the placement of it, it's how it's done, the architecture of it, the design of it. And and, you know, it is a reality, there are listings throughout town, you know, whether they have been previously approved or not. It certainly existed in these locations for well over thirty or forty years. Um, you know, so. You know, from our point of view, this is a different way to do things. Control the listings. Put them in a framed opening in the architecture so that they are in a controlled location. Um, they're not displayed across the entire window opening and a a small item of text to help, you know. Point to people in the right direction. And that's the, that was the goal of the design.
And does it need to be illuminated, the these, these uh, these or, you know? The the pictures there or?
No, none, none of these signs are illuminated. This is, this is just a sign on the inside and this is just a sign on the glass.
No, no, I thought the 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 um. The listings, I I thought that was.
The listings are a monitor, so they could, they could suppose they could put pieces of paper in there and change them out every day, just. Like they used to do in town, but they don't do that in town now. Most of the listings are are either, you know, illuminated signs. You know, like monitors, or they have pieces of paper in illuminated signs. This is. Um, you know, a much more, um, I think it would put out much less light than any of the LED. Um, signage that's around town. And honestly, I don't, you know, our point of presenting this wasn't and isn't to get the other. Realtors, you know, in, you know, hot water or trouble or anything like that with any of their signage. Um, we've just seen that this is, this signage has been here for many, many, many years.
Well, it sounds that they're already um have run up against Mr. Bridger. He's trying to. Um, you know, put the horse back in the barn or whatever with with regard to those. Those ads, I think that's an important thing for us to consider in, you know, looking at this uh panel sign.
So I I would like to ask Mr. Bridger for a little bit of clarification about exactly where the boundary is between. A sign and a product display. Um, so I understand this illuminated sign is a problem for. Mia, for Mr. Bridger, I I think I would prefer it not being. A variable illuminated sign as well. If there were framed uh hand renderings. Of eight houses. In a recessed box, would that be considered a sign or eight signs? Um, if so, if there were little models built of the houses and put. Uh, uh, in the box, would that be considered a sign? I'm trying to flush out the fact that there's a continuum here. Uh, between product display and and sign and try and get your sense of where the red line is.
Sure, thanks for that easy question. Um, but uh. I uh, I've been looking at these signs forever. They've been here since before I was a zoning officer. Um. This application, you know, brought it to my attention. I did discuss it with the municipal attorney. Um. Specifically, you know, the variable board signs are clearly something that do not comply with the the ordinance or they're not permitted. I I talked to her and we did, you know, it's like putting sweaters in a, or mannequins in a window. Um, now maybe there should be a limit. You can tell our sign ordinance is pretty slim. It's like two and a half pages. Um, and it should be more like twenty. But it's uh, it's a gray area, just like the the compass sign that's on the inside of the window that's offset. Um. It it's, it's hard for me to enforce that stuff, so. I'm a little at sea here. I I kind of lean towards that it's a common way to, for a realty company to show what they have in their inventory. Show what they're saying and I I I tend to look at it as being permitted, but. You know, it's definitely something we should follow up when we get to that. Famous code harmonization, so.
So did I misunderstand you before? I I thought I heard you say that you were trying to get the other real estate companies to remove those.
No, there's, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I, there's very aboard message signs at. Callaway Henderson that change and they're they're built into the window and there's also one at Remax, so. Those are not permitted. The other signs that are just pictures of houses listing, um MLS listings. Even if they're slightly illuminated, I tend to look at them as being the product that this, the store, the real estate office has to sell, so.
I see, okay. Okay, um, Mr. O'Donnell and then Mr. And then Mr. McGowan?
Okay, thank you. Um, just, you know, keeping on this issue with sign five, the uh, the the window sign. Um, is, you know, if this were to be approved, would it be a sign that is on twenty-four hours a day? Would it be turned off after business hours?
Well, it could certainly be put on, uh, you know, a timer, um. You know, if if that was um, you know, an issue. Uh, Doc, do you have any thoughts on? On that? I know that that um, most businesses have to close, is it by by two? You know, at night, so, you know, that's when most of the lights shut down in evening in Princeton. Um. But Doc, do you have any thoughts on this?
Um, I I don't think that would be an issue if that tower were to be treated like any other lights shutting down on the street. And at a certain time, I think that's, that shouldn't be an issue for it to be programmed that way.
Right, thank you for um for clarifying that. Um, and, you know, I'm. I'm terrible when it comes to, you know, lumens and wattage and whatever, but can we get any kind of sense of how bright? This is going to be at night? You know, ten o'clock at night, eleven o'clock at night.
We haven't selected the specific monitor for this condition. If there was a uh requirement for. You know, how much output, you know, what the maximum output it could have, we could certainly work within that and. I think we would certainly work with the, you know, engineering department and the building department to uh to meet. You know, any requirements that they might suggest.
And Derek, are there any uh specific requirements regarding, you know, illumination uh intensity?
Uh, yes, sir, it has to meet the uh. The illumination ordinance. Um, there's foot candles at the property line, that type of stuff.
Okay.
Owen, were you talking about the 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 blade sign?
No, not the blade sign, the the front, the Nassau Street.
Right.
Uh, rotating sign. Oh, and I had one other question about that is that, you know, if it's. A rotating sign as it were. Um, you know, you could program it to have. You know, I think I saw samples of one, two, three, six or eight different properties listed. Uh, would that also change or would would it be one set of? You know, one specific number of properties that. Switched in and out.
I I think that may also change, but again, it wouldn't necessarily be every. It it wouldn't be any more frequently than any every few minutes, and I don't even think it'll necessarily change daily. If there are certain parameters, we can work within them, but the intention is. Typically, you know, every day or so to to highlight new listings and. Sometimes they they do change depending on however. Uh, teams feel like they should be programming them, but it's never more than, you know, more frequently than every few minutes.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to comment on the illumination piece because I think lumens is the wrong way to think of it. This is like a TV screen. And depending on what pictures are on display, like if so, if it's a night shot. Or if it's a dark house. It's going to be a lot less bright than if it's a White House. Um, the way that it's going to light up the sidewalk. So there's no way to really. Predict it, but to get a sense of what to expect. It's going to be like a TV screen, you know, a high, high definition. TV screen in terms of the amount of lighting it gives off.
Yeah, that's a good point. Mr. McGowan and then Mr. Bodenheimer.
Josh, can you go back? To. Your slides. Of Nassau Street. And I have a question about.
This, this one, or would you?
Yeah, that will, that'll, that'll do. We had, you know, in in this, um. And Mr. Dobro, Miss Dobro Milski's report. There were numbers given to each of. The signs. So. Um. What numbers are, is like, is this sign? Are we looking at signs? Six? Five, four?
So this is sign three, four and five. And to be clear, and I'll just. Uh. I don't know if I can. Annotate, I guess I can't. Um, this is slot, sign three is is up on the soffit on the interior. Set in about. Two and a half feet, I believe it is. About thirty inches back in. Um, this is sign four, which is on the glazing on the glass. And this is sign five. With the, with the listings.
Um. Okay, that that's sort of, that answers my question. The only question we have is for Louise. We still have to go to the public comment on this?
Yes, we do. Uh, after we get through with board questions.
And we have another, uh.
And we have another application. So let's um. Let's move things along. Mr. Bodenheimer?
Yeah, um, I I guess I'm just, I'm just struggling to get this back to. My understanding of what a variance. Requires and, you know, and what the standards are for reviewing and. Thinking about a variance and first, I just want to make sure, is is that what we're talking about? We're talking about granting a variance?
We're talking about granting. I guess it's.
Five.
Five, actually, there.
Four, four, because the awning was taken out.
Yeah, but oh, there, there are two variances associated with the proposed sign number four. Which is number one, it's not permitted, according to Dan's memo, it's not permitted, and then it's too big. Um.
Well, just to be clear, you know, the 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 reference of of two square feet. On the glazing for a second floor. Um, sign, we could reduce it down to two square feet. The uh, the slogan. Um, but the reality is it's not permitted because it's a second floor business, having nothing to do with the sign. If it was a first floor business. You'd be able to have six square feet.
Okay.
So.
Fair, fair enough.
So, I mean, I guess. I mean, I'm still just struggling to, you know. It's my own experience with variances. I mean. You need to demonstrate that. Is it that the business? Or the building owner is, I mean, to me, it's like the building owner. Is unusually compromised in in their ability to take economic advantage of their property. Because something. Unusual about their property makes it unfair to apply the zoning to that. Property in the same way as comparable properties, like that's. Like, that's my simple understanding of it, and 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 I guess I'm trying to understand, like. Does the fact that a. Business is on the second floor instead of the first order. Meet any kind of a threshold standard for. That kind of analysis, like, is this building disadvantaged? Is that, is that what's going on here? I mean, I just like.
I think.
Figure out, like, if you, you come in with a variance, you think you come in with a whole set of standards about. What you have to show in order to be eligible. For it. I mean, I feel like all this stuff about. The merits of the signage are not our, 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 our mood until you establish this very first point in question, like what? Who who can answer the question?
Well.
How we approach.
I I think, I mean.
I'll, I'll answer it. It's a legal question. I I'll answer it.
Thank you.
Couple of, couple of criteria, Dan lays out some of them in his uh, in his memo. Um, one or more purposes of the municipal land use law has to be advanced. Uh, the benefits of granting a deviation from the zoning ordinance have to substantially outweigh the detriment.
Okay, but but if you hit, if you advance the benefits, but you haven't met some other thresholds, it doesn't matter. The benefits don't matter.
Well, that, that, that's a key criterion. Um. Also that there's no substantial impairment of the public good, and that's really a a key criterion. And that there's no um, substantial um. Uh, well, substantial detriment to the public good and substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance and the master plan.
And then can I just go back to Dan and ask again to, you know, in the context of this con-. This conversation and this question, what your. View was about?
Sure, that, so, so I had, what I heard in some of the testimony when they talked about. What was the hardship here or what was the exceptional circumstance? And correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe Derek correct me, corrected these record if this is wrong. Um, what I heard was that. Realtors are considered an office and not permitted on the first floor. And that the other realtors that are on the first floor. Are grandfathered or they're 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 there for some other reason. And therefore, what they're saying is that. Because of this use, uh. The hardship of them having to be on the second floor because they're not permitted to the first floor. Creates the situation where. There, they, they are a. Semi retail use, if you would, because of the the nature of it, is this is what they're contending. Um, and they therefore don't have the presence on the ground floor or at street level. And that's why they were saying that's what their hardship was or the exceptional circumstances.
Can I ask if, is that, is? I mean, look, setting aside the question of whether it's fair or not. My question is whether that is a valid. Argument. In the context of. Setting, you know, of of requesting a variance.
I guess the first question, is it accurate?
Okay.
Um, I don't know if.
Is it accurate?
Go for that.
The uh. The office use, which a real estate office is, it's clearly stated in the ordinance, is not permitted on the first floor.
And the other uses that they cited, they are on the first floor, but they are they in a different zone or different?
No, they're in, it's, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt you. It's, uh. Yeah, they are grandfathered. They've been there. Um, it's my understanding that that ordinance was changed sometime in the late nineteen eighties. When the town was kind of being overrun by. Stockbrokers and financial institutions and. The town wanted to, you know, maintain a lively. Uh, streetscape with retail and uses that would draw people in.
So the the current zoning applies to everywhere and and just because that it's. It's not necessarily specific to this. Um, property.
The CB zone.
Yeah.
The central business, so.
So they they they're kind of, I mean, the board really has to weigh that up one. And then the 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 benefits part, I mean, they did talk about. Some stuff about, uh. Did the 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 sign number five be more appealing than what's currently there, which has no display? Um, and they talked about uh, it being equated to window displays that may be permitted. Um, however, you also have to weigh that with the fact that the existing first floor use does not have those type of signs now. And if the use were to change, they could have them. Uh, potentially, and I didn't hear anything of the the owner of the building or something or anyone else saying. That they would preclude additional signs if these signs were approved so that you don't have an uh. A proliferation of signs. Um. So there were, I think, I think we're, I could see where the board is struggling with this because there was not compelling. Evidence that I heard, uh, or testimony that I heard.
Can I just thought, and I mean, it just seems to me that that. The act of grandfathering in any use just creates. Has, you know, has the potential to create the grounds for somebody seeking a variance. To not be grandfathered in. Which, if that's a legal boundary, if that's, if you know, if that's a, if that's a reasonable legal argument. Then grant the idea of grandfathering things in doesn't even make sense.
It's not a, it's not a reasonable legal argument. If something has been grandfathered, somebody can't come in and say, you know, I want a variance to do what. This person is doing, uh, because this person's doing it. You know, the person's doing it legally because they started their, uh, whatever they're doing, either before the zoning was put in place or the zoning permitted at that time. But that's, 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 that's not an argument that's going to get anywhere.
Then isn't that the standard that should be applied here?
Fairness is not the same as proving the positive.
But but.
Can I jump in here for a second?
Yes.
Because I tried to address this in my initial comments. I don't view the second floor location as the hardship. What I view as the hardship is the corner location. Of this building and the second entry. To a second floor space, which is not usual. And not contemplated in our ordinance. When limiting the number of signs for a second floor tenant. So that's the hardship and and Jerry, you can weigh in on whether you. And why, whether you think that's a correct. Uh. Hardship, you know, for me to be interpreting, but. Basically, that was what I was, that's where I was coming from. In my initial comments, saying that signage on Witherspoon and on Nassau is appropriate. Because it's unusual to have a second floor tenant with two entries on different streets.
Yeah. I think that's legitimate, but then the question becomes how much sign it should be permitted. It really doesn't go to the question. Of the the variable message, uh.
So I absolutely agree with that. There, though, I was questioning whether it's really a sign versus.
Yeah, right.
Product display. So, and and by the way, you know, this is not a sword that I'm going to fall on, you know, if the. If the board doesn't like the illuminated sign, I'm perfectly fine with instructing the. Applicant to come back with something that's more. Uh. Uh, product display like. And less. Variable message sign like. I think that's perfectly legitimate on the part of the board to to give them that direction. But that, that was the basis. In my arguments for sort of saying that sign was okay, is that I don't really consider it a sign. So, and and the other signs on Nassau Street, I think, fall, they're essentially identical. Or smaller than the signs on Witherspoon Street, which were granted administratively.
Right. Okay, um, I don't see other um, board members. Having questions. We definitely need to hear um, from the public. I am also aware that we need to. Um, take ourselves a quick break. Um, let me ask members of the public if there are uh, any of you who want to speak. Uh, to this, either to pose questions to the witnesses or to give general comments. On um. Uh, your opinion of this application, if you would please raise your hand right now. Um. I'm not seeing any hands go up. There may be no. No public comment. Still no hands up. Okay, so, um. Seeing that, actually.
I I'm just wondering what it makes sense for us to just, I know we have something else to finish while we still have our train of thought and then move on to the.
Yeah, especially if there, since there are no, it was a shame, but I I will formally open. This meeting for public comment. I'm still seeing no hands raised. Going once, going twice. Okay, so I'm closing the meeting to public comment. Um. I I guess I would like, I. I totally respect what you're saying, Mia. I would love to put this to bed also. Um. I would like to, uh, I guess, have a show of hands kind of. Full of questions about, um, and I respect the point you raised earlier about the sort of threshold questions and whether asking all these detailed questions about. Certain signs made sense. In my view, the, you know. Sometimes it depends and. Devils in the details and all that stuff, so I did. Want to hear what folks had to say about the blade sign and the illuminated sign. Um. If, uh, for those of you who are inclined to grant the variance for the blade sign, would you please raise your hand? This is a side, the sign on Witherspoon that. Extends from the side of the building. Okay, I'm not seeing an appetite.
Are we legally allowed to do that?
Well. I'm trying to take people's temperature. I, that's not a binding thing. I'm just trying to take people's temperature.
That each one of the variances be looked at individually.
Individually?
Yes, we are specifically requesting that each one of them be looked at individually.
Okay.
I would agree with Josh on that.
But not all of them, if that's the case you want to.
Okay. Um. Then, uh, let's, let's start that.
Um, Louise, I'm a little uncomfortable here because I think that the board has not. Finished deliberation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not realize that people still had.
You know, I I think that there's, I think people still do have. To to talk among ourselves.
Yeah, okay, I did certainly did not mean to foreclose that. Um.
I think we're close, but we're on.
I I hope, I would hope so. Um. What I, what I don't want to do is still be talking about what might, you know, what uh, conditions might be in something, you know, thirty-five minutes from now and not have. Finished it, still not having taken a break, but. To Owen's point, if there are um, additional thoughts that people have, uh. Or. Or matters they would like to discuss with fellow board members about this, um. This is the right time to weigh in. Owen?
Well, I guess, I guess I'll jump in. Uh, you know, I have. Um. I think, I think that, you know, go going. Item by item, variance by variance. Um. I believe that, in my opinion. As Derek said, sign five, which is the illuminated sign on Nassau Street, is not permitted. I mean, that's just, you know, that's the ordinance. Um, I've heard a lot of. Uh, talk about, you know, from Mr. Zinder and, you know, with with all due respect, if this was a ground floor bit. Business, it would be allowed to do this, you know. Whatever. It's not a ground floor business. That's just the date, that's just. Where we are with that.
Well, even if it was a ground floor business, it would not be allowed to have that, um, that variable message sign.
No, it wouldn't, but it would be, but would be allowed to have the blades on.
It would not be allowed to have listings. It will be allowed.
It would be allowed to have listings, right, but they would also, we would have to grant a variance to fill the size of that window. Uh, because the uh, doesn't the ordinance require it to be smaller? because the, doesn't the ordinance require it to be smaller than what it currently is?
No, based on all the other ones in town, certainly if they are existing.
I'm not talking about based on the other ones in town. I'm talking about based on the ordinance.
Well, Derek?
There is nothing in the ordinance about.
Look, Derek, Derek answered this.
The issue is that it's a variable message sign, whether it changes the message once a day or twice a day, it's not a permitted sign. There is no size limit because it's not a permitted sign. The individual listings are a gray area. But they're, they're all over town and they've been there for twenty five, you know, thirty years. It's been a customary way for realtors to advertise their, their product.
And those are realtors who are, you know, in all instances on the ground floor?
Yeah, I don't know of any other realtors on the second floor. I don't know if Queenston Realty is on the second floor. But I don't know if any other realtors.
But I thought that there was also a a limit on the number of, the, the size of any sign for second floor businesses and they had to share that space. Now, since this is, and I thought that it was less than the size that is being proposed for that.
Eight square feet.
But there, the, the question here is whether listings are signs at all. I mean, there are also size limits on signs for first floor businesses. They're larger, but there's still limits. But what Derek, what I'm understanding Derek to say, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that it's a gray area, what photos of houses are, whether they are signs or they are product. In, you know, information about a product for sale, like as I said earlier, sweaters on a mannequin. So what I think I heard Derek say is it's a gray area, but he's been interpreting listings not as signs and therefore not calculating the area of limitation for those listings.
Okay. That's fine. But if it's an illuminated sign, it is not permitted. So whether there are listings or product or whatever you want to, you want to list it, call it. You know, the, the sign, signs three and four, the ones on the door, you know, if sign four, which is the slogan, can be reduced a little bit to conform, I think that would be fine. I think that sign three, the sign over the door on Nassau Street does serve a purpose for, for wayfinding, does serve a public benefit, which honestly, I'm not sure that too many of the other variance requests to. So that's, that's kind of where I stand.
And where do you stand on the blade sign?
The blade sign is, is not permitted.
Okay, I, I thought that you were limiting your comment on, on not permitted to the illuminated sign, but, but both, okay. Mr., Mr., thanks, Owen. Mr. Bodikheimer?
Is that a thumbs up, Nat?
Try, here, there we go.
Combination of muting and trying to take my hand down at the same time. I'm sorry. My hand is down.
Oh, your hand is down. Okay. Other, other board members, Mr. Texarney?
So I'm not clear. So is the variable messaging sign not allowed? Is that, is that what we're determining?
It is not allowed.
So basically, if, if we allow, you know, I guess, well, we don't really need to grant a variance for those listings because they're not signs. Is that?
Well, the problem is they're not on the first floor. That's, that's.
Well, that, so that, so that's, that's why they need a variance.
Well, they would need a variance even. It's not their space. I mean, I would think, you know, if it, in a realtor's window on the first floor, that's their space, but this is the first floor space and those signs, you know, it's a gray area, but I would say they're not allowed.
And also I'm, I'm a little confused. So is it, is it just this building that's in a zone that doesn't allow realtors on the first floor? Because I know on Witherspoon, there's a realtor on the first floor, there's a realtor further down the asshole on both sides on the first floor. I mean, all the other realtors, I think, are on first floors.
Those, those are the ones who are grandfathered. Is that correct, Mr. Bridger?
So that's, that, okay, so that's what you were saying about grandfathers. Okay. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, my, my stance is that I, I really don't think that it's a big, I know that, I guess, if that's the rule, that there's variable messaging signs are not allowed, then they're not allowed. But I, I really don't think it's that big of a deal. I mean, I think that, you know, yeah, I, I'm kind of ambivalent to it. But it seems like based off of the review, a lot of the realtors just use the piece of the paper, which, whatever. So I mean, I, I'm, I'm, I agree with David. I mean, I, I think that, you know, the variances are, are fine. I, I don't agree. I think that the blades, with the blade sign, I, I think that that's a little much. I mean, I think that also, you know, from a, a kind of a view standpoint, I think that this, this location is, is very iconic, historic, and I think that it would, it'd be good advertising for Compass, but it would definitely, you know, change the, the, the view, the character of that view. And, and I know that's not what we're talking about, but I, I think.
No, that is what, that is what we're talking about. The, the, the key criterion is whether, in addition to furthering municipal law, the, the benefits of granting the variance and letting them do what they want to do with respect to any particular variance substantially outweighs the detriments.
Okay. Well, I, I thought that, yeah, I guess we were talking about for them, but I mean, I guess it's also for the community. So I guess.
It is for the community, right?
Yeah, yeah, right. Yeah. So, yeah, that's, that's where I stand. I mean, so.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Josh.
Follow up. So, you know, as I, I believe, and certainly Tyler can verify this, but I believe, you know, Compass is leasing that small room on the first floor that the, that the variable display sign is in. Okay, so they are leasing ground floor space. So, I mean, to say that they're not allowed any listings down there when they are leasing space on the ground floor seems, I recognize that if you're saying that, you know, variable signs are not, are not permitted for any realtor or anyone in town, okay? But, you know, if they were to put a display in that window that's blacked out right now, that is, that, that display area, and Tyler can verify this, but I believe it's being leased as part of their, as part of their occupancy. It does give then ground floor, first floor square footage. I mean, maybe Dak, I don't know who's the right person.
I can, I can answer that. Yeah. I mean, albeit as small as it is, it is, it is leasable space. I mean, it's, you know, they are, they are paying for that space. So technically that is first floor space, even though it's not, you know, office space, but it is, they are paying for it.
If I could ask Derek whether i- is the issue here on, on this particular point, whether it's office space? I thought, I thought it was, and the fact that it's basically an entry to the office space upper floor and doesn't make it office space.
Well, display space is what it is. It's not, they're renting display space. They're not renting office space on this first floor.
Let, let Derek answer.
Well, I was just.
If it was a real estate office on the first floor, I mean, to me it seems, and I don't know because I haven't heard the whole story, but they, they walk through that area. I don't know what they're displaying because they don't have variant, they're not allowed to put signs out there. At one point with this application, we had a discussion. What if I called that a retail real estate office? And I was like, what are they going to sell hats? I mean, and I don't know how to look at that space. It's, it, to me, it's a past due space to get upstairs. You know, they're not allowed to, to conduct business down there. For the ordinance.
Okay, thanks, Derek. Let, let's hear from a board members with additional thoughts. How are you, how are you leaning? If you have not yet expressed your views, Mr. Cohen?
Well, you have expressed.
Give others a chance.
Could, could we just, Louise, could, could we trouble Dan to just quickly read the, the part of his memo where he commented on the, the, his recommendations or summarize them?
I mean, the, the final paragraph, sort of.
Yes, yes.
So what, what I indicated is while the signs may not be individually excessive in terms of scale relative to the bu- building facade and not objectionable in terms of color, again, in context of the architectural design, the potential combination of these signs, along with signs present or potentially permitted for ground floor uses, could result in cumulative effects of undesirable clutter, confusion and excessive messaging. These proposed signs may result in signs in this location that approach or exceed aesthetic and functional practicality for this building. The two signs proposed for Witherspoon Street would appear to be redundant and excessive relative to permitted signage in terms of locating or finding the business. The advertising nature of the slogan included with sign four and the variable messaging of sign five seem unnecessary to assist in locating or conveying the type of business and could establish an undesirable precedent, leading to further proliferation of prohibited signage. And that's why I indicated that I was not clear on the benefit outweighing the detriments.
That, that, that is really, thanks, Dan. I guess that, that is really my concern, exactly. The confusion, the clutter and the potential proliferation. So I think, but one thing could help is, is if the building owner could reassure us that if we were to grant a variance for these signs or some, a few, you know, some for the second floor owner to, to put signs on the first floor that they wouldn't then be added to by whoever rents the first floor space. And can I ask who, is there someone there and?
And that would be me.
Yeah, I, I, we are fully committed to that. We won't, we, we won't allow, you know, the first floor tenant or any, any other tenant to clutter up the windows. I, I feel that, you know, that what, what Josh and Dak have proposed and ML seven feels that, you know, it's, we don't feel that it's currently clutter. It's the, the slogan I feel is, is subtle. It's small enough that it's kind of off the beaten path. You don't, doesn't stick out and smack you in the face. And, you know, we feel that, you know, it's, it's, it's the way that, you know, obviously we've talked about, everyone's talked about this, but it's the way that, you know, realtors in, in town do business in terms of the monitor. So.
Yeah. So it's not off the beaten path. It is the path. It's the cent, it's the very center. But anyway, thanks. That's helpful. I just, I, I'm wondering, Jerry, if it could be a condition of approval that that if we do grant any of these variances, that the owner would agree not to add any additional signage. This would be the sum total of signage that would be in the building.
I think we can, I think we can do that.
Just, could I make a comment?
Yes.
I'm just concerned if a bank comes, I don't know if the Bank of America is still there, but a bank's going to want to sign. And by right, they're allowed twenty square feet of a facade sign, non-illuminated, ten square feet illuminated, six square feet, two signs on the windows, not to see six square feet, they're allowed balance sign. So I mean, if you have to think about whatever business goes in there and needs to be viable, they have to have some sort of sign, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
Good point.
That's a really good point, and I, I would not be comfortable with that kind of condition because I feel like we'd just be setting ourselves up for an additional hardship variance going forward.
So, yeah, I would, I mean, I feel like we've got a fair amount of consensus that the, the inset sign that's on a wall a couple of feet behind the glass is fine. I haven't heard anyone object to that. I think it's independent of what other signage is on the building. The there's no support for the blade sign. I think the only two signs that are in question are the variable message board. And I think there's a, there's a strong consensus that we don't want to allow this illuminated variable message board. So I think, and then there's the slogan. And I, I personally don't really care about the slogan, but if others object to it, you know, I, I think we were very close to a
Could we just take Owen's suggestion to make it smaller, the slogan?
Yeah, it, it should be the, it should be the size that's allowed.
Two square feet. And let's say that, you know, they're renting that space where the variable message sign is, but we object to the elimination of the, of the sign. You know, we encourage them to do some kind of other display for their product. I think, you know, along the lines of what Mia was saying about the special character of Princeton, if they did hand renderings of their houses, which many realtors do to make them more appealing, because actually a hand rendering is nicer than a photograph. You know, and put them in a display box there that that would be fine, but just not, you know, not the variable message, variable message board. And if, I mean, I'm happy to make that as a, as a motion.
Well, let me just, Mr. McGowan has his hand up, Mr. Owen, sorry, Mr. O'Donnell has his hand up. And we have not heard from Mr. Chow, if he's got any thoughts to share. And I think, I guess, Julie, you spoke on behalf of the HPC and that captured your thoughts about this. Okay. So, Mr. McGowan and then Mr. O'Donnell, quickly.
Yeah, let me comment before you assume that you know what my position is. As I look at this, signs, there, there are two that have already been approved. There, and I'm, and I'm looking at them in terms of Mr. Dover, Ms. Bowsky's numbers. So that one and two have already been approved. Sign three, I think is okay. Four and five, I don't, I don't agree with. Six is which one?
The blade.
Yeah, six, no. And seven's already been removed.
Correct.
Okay, so that's where I stand.
Thank you. Mr. O'Donnell?
And just a real quick question, and I guess this is for Jerry. You know, as we're coming to a vote on this, do we have to, I mean, can we vote on, you know, this variance was requested, but if you change it to this, then it's okay? Or do we just vote on the variances that have been requested?
Well, I, I, we could put in the text of a resolution in explaining why variances A, B, and C were denied, if that's what happens, why they were denied. But if the applicant had had done something differently and we described it, the board might have considered it differently. I, I would, I would not get into that to tell you the truth. I think it just makes things messier. But, but we, 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 we could, we could explain that if and I'd hate to even say if they come, if they come back, we might treat it differently, but, but did we would have been, we, we could say we would have been more inclined to seriously consider this or very seriously consider this if they had done X rather than the Y, which is what they did.
Whip, if I may?
Mr. Whip?
Thank you. Would, would you permit an amendment to the, to one of the applications here to come, to comport with, you know, your recommendations on any one of these particular signs?
I, I, I would say yes. But Louise, what you're feeling out of the board?
Well, I, I, I thought that was a legal question. You're talking about, you're talking about amending your application on the fly?
Well, no, to be clear, we would, we would offer the sign number four that's on the window. As was mentioned before, we would reduce that down to two square feet and we would buy that for the client's documents.
Right.
And then I just wanted a question for, for Derek, Derek, which is, you know, they are leasing that small space that's between the elevator and the window. And we have previously talked about that as their display window. And in those discussions, in your interpretation, they were not permitted to have the, the listings in that location because they were signage for a second floor. However, based on some of the other comments today, it seems like that would be something that's acceptable. So I, I just want to get clarification. Is it, is the issue any display in that window? Is it that it's an illuminated? monitor in that window? If it was, if it was, you know, paper listings that were lit up like the other people have in town, would that be considered okay? Because they are leasing that display window?
I would like the board to, I'm fine with listings. If you want to put them in the window as they're illuminated and other, you know, rematch and, or Caldwell Banker. The board should grant that. I mean, you're not on that space. So I'm, I'm fine if the board wants to grant that accommodation in, in lieu of the variable message board sign, I'm fine with that, but it's just a gray area for me because you're a real estate office, you're not supposed to be on the first floor, you're not supposed to have signage on the first floor. I know it's, it's a gray area, but if the board wants to approve that listings in the window as opposed to the variable message board sign, because you're not in that space, you, you don't have an office down there and you can't have it because of the ordinance. So I would be comfortable with that if the board wants to to utilize that, you know, in lieu of the variable message board.
Yeah, personally, I, I am not at all comfortable with a TV type, you know, variable display board. But I have no objection to images there, you know, or, or tasteful photographs. That's my, my personal opinion, but I, so I guess I'm agreeing with what you just said, Derek. I, I'm not inclined personally to, to grant the variance for that illuminated variable message sign. Mr. Chow, you have your hand up, so what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you on, on the, the, the display window. That, yeah, just use paper, switch the images out as you, you know, just switch them out whenever you can or whenever you want. You know, they do need to advertise for their services. But I'm against the illumination there. I'm okay with all the other signs except for the blade. Yeah, I agree. The blade is, I think, Mr. Dober, Ms. Millsky had mentioned that it's duplicative and definitely, I, I, I agree with that. Because if somebody's entering from that entrance, they, they'll know to enter at the, you know, they probably have an appointment. And so it's, they're, they're looking for the sign, whereas I think the, the blade is, you know, trying to draw in other people. And that's, I think, over, over the top for kind of the aesthetic that we want to achieve on whether it's spent.
Thank you.
Could I, could I ask, could I ask Derek a question? Derek, you suggested that you'd be okay if the board permitted them to put in, you know, paper images in that display space where they want to put the variable message board. Do you think they need a variance for that?
Because they didn't. I mean, they're not, they, they, they're not allowed to be on that space. You know, if the real estate office was on the first floor in that building, I would say, fine. But, you know, real estate offices are not permitted on the first floor, they're on the second floor. So to have any kind of communication of their product, I think needs a variance, and I think the board could grant it. I mean, what we're missing here is planning testimony. And that's, that's, you know, I don't know if the applicant wants to bring a planner back because you haven't heard about, does it harm the zone plan? I mean, I haven't heard that.
Well, that would be, that would be up to ML seven. So Tyler, the question is whether or not you'd want to carry this to another date and bring a planner back.
I, I think we should at this point. I think we really should, just because there's, there's, there's so many variables, unfortunately. Especially with the, with the image sign. You know, I, I, I think we really should just because we're going, we're going from images to, to posting paper in a window, which I, I don't think is really the way we want to go either. So I, I think we need to, unfortunately, at this point.
Well, just to summarize that, I think correctly, and please, people jump in and correct me if you think I'm wrong. I think the consensus here is that there is no appetite for the blade sign and there's no appetite for the illuminated variable. I'm probably using the wrong words, but that, the smaller sign with the, with the, you know, eight images or four images or whatever that change periodically. And that there is a desire to see the, if there is the smaller sign with the, with the
Slogan.
Logan, thank you, that it there's some ambivalence about that, but then at the very least, it ought to be, it ought to comport with the size limits. And since, so therefore be somewhat smaller. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I just want to, I, I'm having sort of PTSD recollections of the mural at Copse Cycle Shop. And I don't know how many of you have been around Princeton long enough to remember this. But there was a beautiful painting on the walls of the exterior walls of Copse Cycle Shop of cyclists cycling. No lettering at all. And I believe it was Derek's predecessor. I hope it wasn't you, Derek. Who decided that that was a sign? And so what we have, what we had for 20 years at Copse Cycle Shops was a beautiful mural covered up with bare plywood. Because the previous zoning officer decided that it was a sign and that it wasn't permitted. And I think, you know, to have tasteful representation of homes that a Realtor is selling in this display window, you know, to, to say that it's a sign is not a correct interpretation of what it is. But be that as it may, I would, based on the summary that Louise just gave, I would love to approve the two signs that are on Nassau Street. Aside from that, I would love to reject the blade sign. And then, you know, maybe the applicant comes back at a later time with a proposal for the display window, or maybe they negotiate it out with Derek. But I don't, I, I don't want to carry this application. We've, we've done so much work on it and we've come to a consensus about so much of it. You know, let's just take that display window and say to the applicant, you figure out something else for it and either bring it back to us at a future date or or do something that doesn't need to come to us. And and be done with it. That's my preference.
I agree.
Me too.
So is that a motion and a second?
Yes. I second David's motion.
One question about it. David, when you said approve signs, you know, what are essentially signs three and four, which are the two on the door in Nassau? Are you talking about sign four in a reduced size? Thank you.
And, and the justification for that in terms of the criteria is just, it adds a little variety to the, to the streetscape. Is, is that the notion?
I mean, really, it addresses, as I said before, I think that the applicant does have a hardship with two street frontages.
I agree with that, yeah.
Right? That's not anticipated in the ordinance for a second floor business. And so it's very simply a, a relief of that hardship in a tasteful and minimal way. That's the justification.
And if we reduce the size of the sign on the door, the slogan, as it were, it's not even a variance anymore.
Well, it is. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mueller, we have a motion and a second. Is there, do you need to capture, are there conditions, well, the condition of the, of the one sign being reduced in size?
Yeah, there's only one other that's in the memos and it's in Dan Weissman's and Derek's. Where the applicants are required to enter into an encroachment agreement or license agreement within municipality. Oh, if the projecting sign, okay, so I don't have to.
Okay.
Okay.
Madam Chair, before we begin, Mr. Whit has his hand up.
Mr. Whit.
Yeah, I, I would like to reiterate our request to carry at least the portion for the quote unquote variable sign. So we can further explore a better way to present that to you with a planner.
We already have a motion on the table.
There is a motion on the table and, and the invite, open invitation to come back with, with a, a, a sign that accomplishes what that variable sign i- is, is meant to accomplish, but in not, but in a different form. So I guess, you know, with the, the board really wants to act on this. And there's nothing preventing you. In fact, we'd encourage you to come back with, with an alternative plan for that. Sign number five.
Right.
If, if they care, but ju- just so the board knows, if they came back with the same variable message board sign, but they had a planner to testify. This would be raised judicata, the board would have already decided it. And it cannot revisit a, a, a decision that it prior made, made on the same application.
And we did.
So Jerry.
And we did request prior to the motion being made for, for whatever technical matter that is.
I just, I have a really hard time imagining how a planner's testimony would change my mind or the other members of the board about the variable message board.
Yeah.
Right, I have concern that the, can you hear me? I have concern that the, the discussion about the use having rented piece of the, the ground floor draws, draws into the whole question of use then, which you don't want to go there, I don't think. But that's, that's a variance in itself there.
It's not this board.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, that, that's, that's not an argument you're going to win. From this point of view, for just the sign.
Yeah, right.
Again, we're looking at just the sign portion to discuss.
I think that's, that's why that sign is a little more complicated than even we're, we're contemplating right now.
And the board has spent a tremendous amount of time deliberating this application, and we have another application waiting.
Right, we're, we're not gonna go back over this whole application. So we have a motion and a second. And you know, invitation for the applicant to come back with an alternative plan for that one sign. And I certainly encourage you to bring a planner when and if you do that. Mr. Mueller, can you, can you just? Is the board obligated to, if applicant requests to continue rather than to vote? Do we have some obligation
No.
Not to vote?
No, we do not have such an.
Okay, all right. Mr. O'Donnell, quickly.
Just very quickly, just does the, is there also a condition that the owner of 90 Nassau will not allow additional signage for a future first floor of blades on it? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Now, in terms of the motion, so it's minus site plan approval, but there are some waivers that have been set forth on pages one and two of, of the report from Dan and, and Derek. And it's just waiver of checklist items, fire protection plans, site plan, existing opposed features, building drawings, landscape lighting and signage plan and required notes for all plans. So I, I just mentioned that. So that should be part of the motion. And then there's just the one condition, which is that sign number
Or, or.
Right, right, be reduced in size to two square feet. Right? And then, and then, well, and the other part, of course, is that variances are granted for, for signs three and four, with a qualification for four, but denied for
Five and six.
Five and six, yeah.
And seven with withdrawal.
Yeah.
Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Did, did somebody actually make that motion?
Yes.
Yes, that was made by Mr. Cohen and seconded by Ms. Sax.
I, yes, Ms. Capizoli? Yes. Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
I am not for sign four. Otherwise, fine.
Yep. Well, you have to just vote yes or no. I, I totally, I, I hear what you're saying, but
Okay, no.
Okay.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sax? Yes. Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Uh, Jack, you're you're muted.
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, uh, thank you all. That was, that took a lot longer than I think anyone expected, and yet there were some pretty complicated things to discuss. Thank you to the applicant and I, I expect we'll, we'll, we might very well see you again. Welcome to Princeton. Good luck.
Thank you so much, everyone, for your time.
You're in a, you're in a beautiful, beautiful building and you, and you, your logo is, is really nice. And I think it's going to look nice on that building, that iconic building, as Mia was saying, and so.
We're thrilled to be there. So thank you, everyone, for all the time.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. I, I need to take a break. I don't know about everybody else. So can we take, let's see, it's 10:08 right now. Let's reconvene at 10:15 sharp, if, if we can, and we'll try to get through this next application more quickly than the last.
Thank you.
See you soon. Dober Mills. Mr. Dober Millsky, I think we can skip the overview part. Unless, because I, I think we can go straight to the to, to Princeton's presentation of this. Do you disagree? Is there any, anything that you want to flag at all?
No, I think the, the main difference, if you would, I mean.
I'm gonna have to swear you in and all our experts and proof of publication and service are in order. The board does have jurisdiction.
Thank you so much. Yeah, well, I haven't even, I, I, I got ahead of myself. Before you do that, Jerry, let me, let me read this into the record. This is a hearing related to trustees of Princeton University, a minor site plan with variances having to do with signage. Residential colleges, Elm and South Drives, block 45.01, lot 101, file number P 2222-247P M. And as you said, Jerry, notices are in order and we have jurisdiction.
Correct.
And so can you swear in our all of our professionals?
Yep. And Dan and Derek, if you could raise your right hand. Do we have any other professionals here at this point? Oh, and, and Dan Weissman as well. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do, sir. So Madam Chair, to answer your question, I think what, what you're going to find here with this application is that the scale of this is very large, but the, the, this is internal, very internal to the university that there are no outside properties that are really affected by this and that the signage that is being proposed with this application, although it exceeds certain standards, is really all oriented towards the idea of wayfinding and destination finding and fits in the scale of the buildings, that the size of these buildings. So I think you're going to find that the, the, the variances can be justified and hopefully the applicant will provide testimony to do so.
Okay, great. And just quickly, before we start, Mr. DeGresia, Carrie, can you please move Mr. Zinder over into the applicant air, I'm sorry, applicant attendee area. It might increase the uh, area. It, it might increase the size of other people's faces on my screen. Thanks. Go ahead, Mr. Dugresia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, for the record, I'm Christopher Dugresia from the law firm of Figury, Drinker, Biddle and Reath, here on behalf of the applicant trustees of Princeton University. As indicated, we're here today to share with you a wayfinding and identification package for residential colleges. And you probably remember that it's a, a facility that's newly built. When we came in for the approvals, we did not have a identification or wayfinding package. And we're here this night to, uh, present it to you. It is a very important aspect to have signs. Because without them, the students, uh, staff, emergency services, visitors would not be able to identify the buildings and halls or, um, space that they're entering. So the college itself is made up of two separate colleges, residential colleges has two separate colleges. I think there's eight halls. There's other rooms with, uh, specific uses such as a dining hall. And, um, if you walked up, you would just see glass doors without any labels and it would not function well. So I think it's in both public health and safety issues that, um, are promoted here. And clearly something that is, is a benefit to the community and visitors and, um, emergency services. So with that being said, I'd like to introduce, uh, university architect Ronald McCoy, who will take us through the presentation. Mr. McCoy is a licensed New Jersey architect. To the extent that he provides any architectural testimony, we'd like to have him qualified.
Okay. And Louise, I take it you don't want Dan to run through his, uh, report?
I, I don't think that it's necessary.
Okay, that's fine. Ron, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So it's what are affirmed.
And will you have other, uh, witnesses as well?
Why don't we swear in Aaron?
Yeah, yeah.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give? Will be the truth.
I do.
So it's one affirmed.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Madam Chair. Uh, I'm going to jump right into this. I think that Mr. Dobber Millsky and Mr. Dugrazia did a very good job of, uh, establishing the sort of fundamentals of the project. I'm going to try to walk you through all these slides quickly, just to fully explain the project.
Yeah, and, and, and Mr. McCoy, let's, uh, mark this as A1. And then you can refer to the, the page or so.
Yeah, I don't think that page numbers, but I will, I will read them. So, so let's call this page one of exhibit one. This is a cover page. All right, page two, um, there are two, this is just to orient everybody. There are two colleges and I'll explain why there are six signs attached to these two colleges. Within each college, there are four residential halls and I'll explain why there are nine signs. And then there are a handful of rooms that are, uh, that are requesting signage as well. Those are particular destinations. As Mr. Dobber Millsky said and Mr. Dugrazia said, this is all about identity and wayfinding. This complex is four hundred and eighty-five thousand square feet. It's a thousand student beds. It is a small village and, uh, these signs are appropriately scaled in size to help people find their way through this part of the site. We thought that we would start with a site plan. Again, to reiterate the point that this was, this is inward facing. Uh, is not visible from any public streets. Alexander to the west would be the nearest faculty road to the south would be the nearest Washington Road to the east. Uh, it is bounded by, uh, you know, private university roads, Elm Drive and Woodlands Way, Elm Drive to the west and Woodlands Way to the south. So this is the site plan. This is now, I just lost where we are. So, um, one, two, three, four, I want slide, slide four. Each red dot is, uh, one of the proposed signs. There's twenty-one total. And I'm going to break this down as I, as I walk through this. Uh, slide five. Uh, these are the six college signs. There are two at the, uh, so the college on the west is New, is New, New College West. And then the college on the right is Yay College. So there are two at the northern entrance of New College West, two at the southern entrance of New College West. And one at the north and one at the south on Yay College. The reason there are two on, um, New College West is that we are, uh, anticipating that the name will change with a donor name. And so we're coming in early to say we want to put a temporary name in location number one and a permanent name after the donor is named. As I go through the slides, you'll see why that, why that is. Next slide, I think we're at six. Someone's got to help me count here. We're in, we're now at new, seventh, thank you. We're now at New College West. You'll see in the lower left is a, a location plan. The red dot shows where we are. As I was saying, the red rectangle that's on the glass on both of these images is where we would put New College West as the, as the sign for the, for the college. When we have a donor for the building, we will remove the sign on the glass. So that'll go away. And we will add a sign over the portal, a larger sign over the portal. So we're requesting the, 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 uh, the variance approval for these two signs, although there would, there would never be two at one time. And we would start with a temporary sign on the glass. And then we would move to the sign above the portal, uh, when, when, when we have a donor. So now on slide eight, this is a, um, drawing that shows, uh, how that signage would sit on, on the glass. In this particular case, this one fits within the, um, signage code and there's not, there's not a variance required. On slide eight now. Oops, hold on.
Actually, I think it's, I think that's actually seven. I think you were right. The other one was six.
That's correct.
Yep.
Okay.
I can keep track here. This is.
Thank, thank you.
This is slide eight here.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you, Aaron. All right. So now this would be the permanent signage that sits above the portal, uh, of New College West. It'll have a different name. Uh, will not be called New College West when it has a donor. But, uh, so this is a placeholder in terms of the numbers of letters. We would, we would, uh, let's say cap the, the area. But so, so regardless of the, of the, of the number of letters we would work with in the area that we have, we have, that we're requesting permission for here. You'll see it is, uh, in this case, it's recast, sandblasted into the brick. It's not illuminated. Uh, it just sits there, uh, so it's visible with the ambient light of the site. All right, moving on, you'll see the diagram on the lower left shows we're still at New College West, looking at the south corner of that building. Aaron, we're on slide nine now.
Yep.
That's correct, ma.
Similar, similar situation would occur here. On the glass would be the temporary sign until the donor's named and then the name would go onto the brick. Uh, and the, this is just two images of the same condition, the corner of that building. Um, we're looking from, uh, the southern part of site on the south side of the, the retention basin. Slide ten, slide ten is showing, uh, the actual size of the signage, the graphics of the signage. And as I said, this, we're showing you here the temporary sign. And, um, uh, slide eleven then will show the, uh, the permanent sign carved into the, into the brick. Slide twelve, we're now coming over to Yay College. You'll see a rendering of Yay College as it's proposed. Now here, the donor is named and so we don't have to do the temporary sign. We just go straight to the permanent sign. And this, this sign is actually, uh, a, a debossed. It sticks out from, from the, uh, from this, from the surface of the brick. And it's a precast concrete that sit, sits in the brick. So this one, uh, on the left, the rectangle, red rectangle shows where it would go, uh, and the right, right hand slide shows the, uh, the rendering. Again, not illuminated. Slide twelve.
This is thirteen, Ron.
Thir- thirteen, I'm sorry. Thirteen is, um, uh, just a detail of, of that sign that sits over the portal of Yay College. Slide fourteen is the southern condition of that. Again, the diagram on the plan on the left and location on the concrete wall where that would be located of the southern side. You can barely see it even from within the boundaries of the site. And slide fifteen, uh, this one again does, does not have a variance because it fits within the, uh, the code and the signage and the location. Slide sixteen. So now we're moving away from the colleges. We're going to show the different residential halls. As I said, each college has, has four residential halls. In, in one case, because of the, the identity faces both to the west and to the east, we're requesting two particular signs for that, for that hall. Help me here, slide sixteen.
This is seventeen.
Seventeen. We are, we're looking at the rendering on the left. The red rectangle shows the, um, uh, location of the sign. These would be, uh, rate, slightly raised aluminum letters on the glass of the building. So, and this is a kind of typical vocabulary that we would use. You can see it's two point seven five square feet. Uh, and the individual letters are five and three eighths of an inch tall. I'm guessing we're eighteen finally.
This is eighteen.
This is the next hall. This is, uh, Conji Hall. Same, similar vocabulary. In this case, it's not on the glass. It's on the, on the wood. And it would be aluminum on the, on the wood wall. Nineteen. Uh, we're now back on the other, now we're fa- facing the, the eastern facing, uh, entrance hall, entry doors to Conji Hall. And it was sit on the glass with aluminum letters on the glass, same size letters, not illuminated and inward facing to the campus. Twenty. Now we're, uh, at the next hall on the New College West where, where Quanza Jones Hall. And here it sits on the, on the, uh, surface next to the, to the door. Twenty-one, uh, we're a little bit around the corner here on the southern part of the site. And it sits within the portal here, uh, again, raised letters on the brick. In this case, same sizes, not illuminated. Going too fast. We're in twenty-two now.
Slide twenty-two, Ron.
Twenty-two. This is now, uh, at Yay College, the northernmost building on Yay College. Same size letters, not illuminated, sits on the glass. Twenty-three, this is now the next clock, next hall to the south. This is Foo Hall. And it sits on that wall as it's shown by the red rectangle. Twenty-four, we're showing you two options here. We are, uh, we're requesting permission for the size of the sign. We're still debating on which is the right location. But it's the same size letters, not illuminated. It's going to be on glass in either case and it'll be that aluminum letter, uh, on the glass. And, and we're, we're still actually resting with ourselves about where it's located. Um, and then we're in twenty-six.
This is slide twenty-five.
Twenty-five, uh, Manion Hall, the, the, so, so the most, uh, portal on, on Yay College, uh, in the case, this case is just sitting on, on the brick. Um, now there are a handful, as I said, of room signs, particular rooms that are sort of common to both colleges that we just need to help people, uh, find and, and provide the identity and wayfinding that was spoken of earlier. This is twenty-seven, Aaron.
It's a slide twenty-six, Ron.
Twenty-six, right. So twenty-seven, uh, this is the ceramic studio. We're just showing you here the size of the letters. So this is three inches tall, so smaller. These, and we're giving you the range of the size from point two-five square feet to point seven, seven-five square feet. These are purely just wayfinding signs to help people find particular common destinations within, within the complex. And, and the, we're just showing you the various locations of, of all the signs in the complex there. So that's where we are. I'm going to stop sharing and stop worrying about what number we're on. And, um, and then, uh, allow, allow conversation and discussion.
Can I ask who Mr. Malnerick is?
Aaron is a project manager on the project. He's an architect in the office of facilities.
Thank you.
At Princeton. He's with Princeton University. And as you can tell, he can count really well.
Yeah.
That's where they pay you the big bucks, right? Yeah, thanks for asking for that clarification, Carrie. We should have, uh, should have done that on the front end. So, um, questions for Mr. McCoy or Mr. Dugrazia? Or comments? Any, any thoughts? I mean, Mr. O'Donnell.
I'll go. Okay. Uh, thank you very much. I think that was, uh, that was very, uh, very well done. Obviously, uh, you know, I think the signs of all, uh, you know, obviously are necessary and, uh, fit in well with the aesthetic of the, uh, project as a whole. I did have a question. I think it was on, uh, slide fourteen, I believe that was, uh, Yay, Yay Hall or even College. I'm sorry. I believe it was, uh, uh, perspective coming from the south from the retention basin. Or, you know, um, and, and it had the name of the college kind of low on the, uh, on the building itself. Is there a path that leads that way so that people will see it? I mean, it didn't, it didn't look like there was on the, on the rendering.
Uh, yeah, we showed a photograph there and it's, uh, the foliage in the foreground is hiding the pathway, but that is right on a pathway that is a, uh, uh, that sort of leads through the center of the site and then exits through the southeast corner of the site. So it's, it's on that main pathway.
Okay. All right. That's fine. And then for Feliciano, um, well, the, the sign is on the inside in that kind of alcove with that tunnel. Uh, you know, it's going to, people are going to have to like, you know, be right on top of it in order to see it. Does it make more sense to pull it out to the side of the building?
It does make more sense to pull it out to the face of the building facing the courtyard. And we're actually in the process of, um, preparing another application to come back to you to request for that signage. We didn't want to hold up this application for that signage, but we've come to the same realization that you can't do it about two minutes. It took us about three years to get there. But, but we realized, we realized that that, that hall is too hidden. And, uh, we're, we're trying to, we're, we're here before you tonight with this, with this application because we're trying to get ready for a dedication in the spring. And we didn't want to hold up our signage package for those, for that sign. And also Manion Hall, which is part of Yay College, has a similar condition where the signage is not as visible as it needs to be. It's sort of tucked inside a portal. So, um, we don't look forward to it, but we will come back again, uh, to request, uh, uh, variance for, for those two signs.
Oh, it's going to be the last time you're going to be here for quite a while, um.
No, I never said that.
At one point, we were trying to squeeze it in. We even provided notice of those signs, but we never were able to get you the plans and the applications the details in time. So we'll have to come back and present it at that, that future hearing.
Okay. Well, uh, great catch, Owen. That, that's two gold stars. Ms. Sax. Um, you're muted for some reason.
Can't hear you. Yeah.
Yeah.
Nope.
Mia, is your computer, uh, volume off? Rather than just to mute?
What about now?
Yes.
Good. We can hear you now. We, we heard you when you said, what about now? So if you, I think you just need to now unmute yourself.
I think she, I don't think she could hear us. Tell her we could hear her.
Oh.
That's what happened.
So Mia, when you, Mia, when you took your earbuds out before and then you said, what about now? We could hear you then, but apparently you could not hear us.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Oh, and I can hear you too.
That works.
Like I should have something of tremendous import to say.
Quickly, quickly.
You don't, but I, I, but I just want to say that tonight was really an illustration and the importance of signage and, um, how a sign can detract or enhance. And I wanted to convene, commend Mr. McCoy and his, uh, staff for, uh, a whole display. staff for a whole display of signs that were really aesthetically enhanced, the design and were, it was a, was such an enjoyable presentation. And so, and also good luck finding a donor who's who can pay for it and whose name fits in that slot.
Thank you very much for all those comments.
Other comments from board members? Any questions? If there are no questions or comments, let me then see whether any members of the public have any comments you'd like to share. I'll open the meeting now for public comment. So if you are attending the meeting as a member of the public and would like to speak for up to three minutes, please raise your hand virtually right now. We have six attendees. No one is raising their hand, going once, going twice. Okay, so I'll close the meeting to public comment. Any, so I guess this is final call for questions or comments and an invitation to make a motion.
Just I have a question for Dan and 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 Derek. I was just a little confused on your page three. Where under section three point oh, you talked about twenty one facade signs where four permitted, so that'd be seventeen. And then two design review signs are in excess. Is that seventeen plus two? Because the chart has eighteen. So I just want to make sure I got all the numbers right.
So, Jerry. There's twenty one total signs, but three of them don't have any variances.
Right, that's what the short chart shows, yeah. Okay.
That's it. So Yeah, twelve of them exceed the number. They're just additional signs because we, you could only have like per facade. So twelve of them exceed the number, two exceed size. And four of them need a variance because they don't face frontage.
Right, right. Yeah, that chart lays it out quite well.
Does.
Okay, well, I was just a little confused about the earlier text, but now, okay, clear to me now.
Okay. Someone like to make a motion? Ms. Sax is moving it, I guess. Moving approval.
Lovely signs, yeah.
Variances.
Minor site plan approval with with variances and two conditions that I would propose, they're both from again on Dan Weisman's and Derek's memo. There's six point oh, one, one, the first one says, the applicant shall provide updated drawings to satisfy minor site plan checklist items. Blah, blah, blah. Has happened done, Christopher?
I'm not sure which items they're referring to. Was this in the initial completeness report or?
This this isn't, this is in the memo of September twenty eight.
Oh, okay. So I guess they are still looking for some additional information.
Yeah, six, six point.
Mr. Weisman or either Dan or Derek, can you
Yes.
Confirm exactly what you still need?
Yeah, there was a couple of items in the checklist that what had been provided as backup information, which was the key map, things like that were provided from the original new residential colleges application as reference. But in the letter you had provided, I don't know if it was you, Mr. DeGrazio or Mr. Tadaro from your office, stated that as a condition of approval, you can provide updated drawings that includes that.
Okay. Okay, that's one condition. The other one is all temporary signage shall be removed concurrently with the installation of the proposed signage.
Makes sense, yes.
Yep. In a few cases, it's directly on top of, so.
And that's it, just those two.
Okay, good. So this was moved by Ms. Sax. Mr. O'Donnell, did I see you raise your hand a second?
Yes.
Okay. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Ms. Capzoli? Yes. Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
So if we were in a vehicle, I think we'd have broken the land speed record. But I really do appreciate you know, a crisp presentation. There, this was sort of a slam dunk in a lot of ways, but but it was really well done. And I especially appreciated seeing the images in the lower left that showed exactly where we were talking about with each one. That was, that would have been super helpful with the last application. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. The only thing we forgot were the page numbers.
Yes.
We'll get that next time.
In the spirit of continuous improvement, right? There's always something.
Lesson learned.
We'll work on it. Thank you all very much.
Alright.
Thank you all.
Okay.
Good night.
So next meeting, December first.
Yep.
Um, Mr. Cohen.
I moved to adjourn.
You need a second.
And Mr. Quinn's absence, I'll say, Tex already been on already did. Okay. Moved in second. Is it all in favor? Please say aye. Thanks, everybody.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you, you too.
Take care.
Thanks. Happy Thanksgiving.